Hello, we're gonna get started in a little bit here, just getting people signed in. Alright, we got a couple more minutes, so I'll wait just a little longer for people to join up.
Oh yeah, I was looking at some cases of what was happening in Texas. Apparently, uh, people have already hopped on the bandwagon of blaming, uh, windmills for the blackouts.
Really?
Windmills only account for ten percent or fifteen percent of the state's power. And, uh, what they found was the real cause is a natural gas shortage.
And that's weird because, um, there's so much natural gas down there, it's not even funny.
Apparently, it's more of a, it was mismanaged and like if you're a logical, like person in Texas, you don't predict things like this happening. So they usually predict for summer peaks, but they don't predict winter peaks.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously it has to be mismanaged because, uh, you know, with that much natural gas sitting in the ground right there.
I think they also, uh, didn't agree with winterize, they didn't winterize, um, the windmills, which is basically just putting on like a non-stick polymer coat around the thing. So like ice crystals don't form on the surface.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, you know, I remember living in areas, um, where we would get something called glaze where it would, um, like ice would like a quarter of an inch thick would cover everything in like these trees. They would look amazing because they would have all of this ice on them, but the ice was super heavy. And it would cause the tree branches to crack off. And when they did, they would, they would take out power lines when they did. So, um, I remember being days and days without power, uh, when we lived in Missouri, because that, that happened, um, to us.
Apparently, apparently though, it was so far the death tolls fourteen right now in Texas. I think it was ten died from car wrecks so far, other than the big.
Giant one hundred one, yeah, car.
I think, um, two died from carbon monoxide poisoning because they were trying to heat themselves up in their car.
People, people would do that at their, like their houses, they would, um, you know, they would try to like start a fire in their fire.
Their garage.
Right, yeah. And then they would like not have it vented properly. And then like an entire family would, would be asphyxiated.
I think though, it's like what streets of Texas look like right now is just people have bonfires to start in their like street in their like driveways, like almost all the way down.
Yeah, I remember we, we, we were freezing and, uh, because this, that, that glaze thing happened in Missouri. Uh, this was when Ben was really little, uh, and you know, we were, um, it was like southwest Missouri and, uh, we basically had to leave town and get to an area where there were hotels that had, uh, power. And, um, because like we tried, you know, staying warm and it just like at our house and it just wasn't working, um, so.
But I think we're supposed to see another inch of snow around five or so.
Well, my wife is telling me it's going to be three to five inches, um, so.
I always, I mean, people say it was going to be like eight inches coming Monday, it was only like two.
Yeah, right. I mean, we're, we're in Tennessee, but, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's definitely.
Thing is with how the snow formed, like it's not like, oh playful in the snow. It's like, no, you slip if you take a step outside. It's, it's, it's like outside of my house, like it's not snow, that's packed ice.
Yeah, it's what happened is it's snow.
Which is better for sledding.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how would you stand?
Like, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, like if you think this is bad, just trust me, it's the, the, the only really thing that, that makes it bad for, for us is there are no plows down here. There, there's just no, they're just not ready for it, you know, because they don't deal with it very often, so.
Yeah, I think the main road in my neighborhood got plowed like two days.
Okay.
Other than that, all the other roads are like completely white.
Yeah, so, you know, it's just, you have to, you have to know how to drive on kind of like that icy snowy stuff, but.
Yeah, if you're a four wheel drive car.
Well, no, I mean, really, a lot of it is just, it's kind of like an acquired skill. You, you, you go slow, but then you have to accelerate at certain times and so. Yeah, I mean, I grew up with that kind of stuff, so I'm not like totally like unused to it, but it's been a long time since I've had to deal with it, so, uh, it has been interesting. Yeah, I totally get them cancelling everything because though it like people would be everywhere if they didn't do it, so. Alright, uh, I think I got everybody, uh, who joined. Someone just joined, that was Chase. Alright, so, uh, welcome everyone. Yes, Olivia, what's up?
Um, how long is this Zoom call for?
I'm gonna go till four today just because we're not doing anything until Monday. So if you need to drop off early, feel free. That's, you know, just as like if you're one of the people taking the AP, make sure you get the notes, make sure you, you know, get the information in your head that you're gonna need, but you know, it's, uh, that's entirely up to you. Uh, but, um, yeah, that, and, and I figured why not do it today when, everybody's stuck at their house and they're kind of snowed in and, and everything's frozen still. You know, where we're all like, we don't have anything really better to do in a lot of ways, um, although I'm sure there are people who do. Rather than like on a Saturday where everything's thawing out and it's like the first time that we can all get out, so, um, but.
We on, are we on track to come back?
Oh, on track to come back Friday, you say?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean Williamson County, my son goes to Williamson County, they just canceled Thursday and Friday. Uh, just now, I can't imagine with, with, without everything melting that, I mean, I'm just.
I heard it's supposed to be a high of thirty-four today.
It'll melt a little bit. Yeah, I just don't think it'll be gone enough that it'll be safe.
I mean, yeah, especially with extra inch.
Don't take that as like gospel or anything, that is just a complete guess on my part, so, um, but yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm basically assuming that we're not gonna be back until Monday, so, um, yeah, Faith, go ahead.
Um, I haven't been getting the emails about.
Right, yeah, you, you and Nick both, um, uh, like I have had you guys on the list, like for, when was the last time you got one of those group emails? Like you're on that list, like I all.
I got one on Sunday, but about the, uh, homework from last week, but, um, I haven't gotten any, I'd never got anything about preferences for, um,
Really?
Data have all on.
Yeah, because I saw somebody, some, somebody sent me your vote. Well, it's, it's, all I did was copy and paste all of your, your emails, your school emails in there, um. Dude, is it your school email that you check or is it your, uh, other email? Because I didn't, I like, I have the parent emails and then the personal student emails, like in a separate thing, which I pasted in the BCC. So maybe it's, maybe you guys had it, your personal email, you and Nick, and then I just, I, I didn't do the parent ones, you know, just, I was, working, trying to be quick, maybe that was the problem, but, um, normally I do. Well, anyway, uh, welcome everybody, uh, we're gonna try to make some significant progress here. It's, this is less than ideal, obviously, but, um, we, we just gotta make do and try to, you know, do what we can because, you know, we're trying to stay on schedule and obviously we're not totally on schedule, but. Anyway, um, we're gonna get started, so, uh, our, uh, I think we left off with, uh, um, the Panama Canal. Our focus is now going to shift over to, uh, Teddy Roosevelt's foreign policy, which, uh, gets a nickname in Latin America. It's called Big Stick Diplomacy and it comes from an old African proverb that he liked to quote, um, which is speak softly, uh, and carry a big stick and you'll go far, meaning you don't have to brag a lot. You, all you have to do is carry a big stick, everybody will see it and, you know, they'll back off. Uh, but the, the press kind of turned it around on him and basically, um, you know, the, they have political cartoons like this showing him walking around with a big stick, you know, um, which is the American Navy essentially. Um, and so, Roosevelt is gonna be very forceful with, uh, Latin American nations. Um, and it's really, a lot of it has to do with protecting his baby, which is the Panama Canal. So does anybody remember the Monroe Doctrine? Uh, what is the Monroe Doctrine? Anyone? Yes, Ethan, go ahead.
Just basically protecting the western hemisphere from the eastern hemisphere, though Teddy Roosevelt kind of used it in a way of being a bit forceful on Latin America.
Okay, well, um, let's kind of, because it's, it's a little complicated because really the, the Monroe Doctrine is, is supposed to be forceful towards whom? Like who do we threaten? Europe, yeah. And back at the time that it was, it was issued, like our navy was like tiny compared to the European navies and we had no, enforcing it, but the British kind of were like, hey, we don't want anybody getting a new colonial empire on the other side of the world. So we'll actually kind of help you enforce it because it coincides with our interests. Um, but now we have a navy and now we, we've defeated a, a European power that we're not on par with Britain.
Yeah.
But we're, we're, we're definitely closer than we were, so.
Think at this point, it's mainly about, um, basically being forceful under the excuse that we're just driving out that foreign influence.
Well, okay, but it's kind of curious because we have to figure out how do we get Europeans out of the, the approaches to the Can, Panama Canal? Um, without starting a war. Um, and so this is where you see that clever politician that underlies the, the gung ho kind of, you know, image that Teddy has. Underneath it, there's that clever politician and basically what he says is, um, okay, so what we have is we have Latin American nations who take out loans from Europeans and European banks and they sometimes will default on those loans and the Europeans aren't gonna let them just get away with defaulting, they're gonna go in and they're gonna force these Latin American countries to pay their debts. And this is a pretty regular occurrence. You've got these various little countries in the Caribbean, it happens all the time. And, um, that means that there are European warships, uh, near the approaches to the Panama Canal, which is like, kind of like the most important sensitive military thing that we have going is, is the building of this canal. And so Teddy Roosevelt wants European warships out of the Caribbean and out of the approaches to the Panama Canal. And there is a crisis over the Dominican Republic. And, uh, essentially the Dominican Republic has gotten into trouble with Britain with debt. And there are British warships that are collecting and, um, uh, or there are British warships who are, that are going to collect. And Teddy Roosevelt invokes the Monroe Doctrine and says to Britain, uh, stay out of the Caribbean. But he adds a caveat. So this is what we call the, the Roosevelt, Roosevelt corollary to the Monroe Doctrine. And what he says is, if you need a debt collected, we'll do it for you. We'll be your debt collectors. So what ends up happening, it, you know, in kind of our way of trying to be aggressive and, and, uh, keep Europeans out of, uh, the approaches to the Euro, to the Panama Canal, who do we end up invading? Uh, and Ethan, go ahead.
Dominican Republic. We basically just do Europe spitting at this point.
Well, yeah, and it's kind of clever though, because we're, we're telling Europe to stay out of our side of the world. But we're like, but we'll, we'll do your dirty work for you if you need it, so. Please stay out of our side of the world. So it, it's kind of funny how that works out. Uh, so Teddy gets to look like tough and, um, you know, when really we're kind of like, you know, being super nice to the Europeans as a way of getting them to stay out of our side of the world instead of like forcing them and protecting Latin America, we're, you know, we're basically serving as debt collectors. Um, and so this kind of starts a new tradition, uh, where we are now invading Latin American countries on a regular basis with our troops, um, in our navy and just enforcing, um, our will and the will of Europeans on them in order to keep the approaches to the Panama Canal clear. Yes, go ahead, Ethan.
Uh, did this cause a rise in banking and business interest in Latin America at the time? Because we're invading so much.
There will be, yes, yes, absolutely. Um, American business interests are going to follow. Um, and really under Taft is where you're going, you're going to see the use of business interests, uh, to enforce American will. So the, they love, I don't know why, they love to compare big stick diplomacy with Taft's dollar diplomacy and then with Wilson's moral diplomacy, for whatever reason, they just love to compare the three. Um, so we're gonna make sure we hit kind of like the differences in these three presidents as we get, excuse me, further in, um, on how they basically operate. Uh, so, we continue kind of this image of, of this, this more muscular foreign policy, uh, uh, in Africa actually, because, um, you know, the, the coast, the northern coast of Africa for a long time had been, you know, we talked about the Barbary Pirates, you know, way back when we talked about Jefferson. Um, there, there were, it, it was chaotic, you know, piracy was common. And there were these little kingdoms, these little Islamic kingdoms that were, were kind of like established. And they would last for a while and then they would disappear and, um, uh, that they basically operated, you know, on piracy and, um, uh, there, uh, a, a news story came out that a, an American citizen had been captured by one of these little warlords, his name was Rizouli. And, um, President Roosevelt sent a very short message, um, to Rizouli. And it, it, it was Purticaris, who was the, uh, American citizen, Eon Purticaris, who was supposedly, you know, being held by Rizouli. Um, Purticaris alive or Rizouli dead, that little phrase. And of course, when the, um, press got a hold of it, it just, you know, it continued to feed this image of Teddy as this gung ho warrior. And, you know, everybody just kind of ate it up because it was like us, you know, being very strong and muscular in our foreign policy. And, uh, of course, Rizouli allowed Purticaris to leave. Um, and it later turned out that Purticaris wasn't even an American citizen. Uh, so this is what is known as the Purticaris affair, but it kind of all fits in with this big stick diplomacy. This is, this is the new American, uh, you know, kind of, we, we are a presence. We are, we would, we would be considered like a minor power considered compared to the great powers of Europe. Based mostly on the size of their navies, although some of them on the sides of their armies like, um, Russia, Austria, Hungary and Germany. So, um, that's big stick diplomacy. And that takes us to the campaign of nineteen oh four. So this is the first time that, um, that Roosevelt is going to be running for office in his own right. So remember, he served out the rest of McKinley's term when McKinley was assassinated. And, um, the, uh, conservative pro-business wing of the party absolutely, absolutely hates Roosevelt. They want him out. And, um, the, um, that, you know, really the trust busting has just freaked them out. They're like, they, they're like, we, we want this guy out, we want this guy out. And, um, Mark Hannah, uh, the guy who was the puppet master for McKinley actually ends up running for the nomination against Teddy Roosevelt. And, um, we've talked about this with current events, you know, how like somebody who's an insider in the party can sometimes kind of quote unquote rig it a little uh, against outsiders, you know, this was always like what Bernie Sanders was always like facing, you know, and, and when he went up against people in the Democratic Party. Um, so Roosevelt was kind of seen as this outsider when it comes to party politics, because he really isn't, you know, in with the party bosses, so to speak. And Mark Hannah is, and so it looked like Mark Hannah was actually gonna take the nomination away from Roosevelt. But right before the convention where they would have, everybody would have cast their votes, Mark Hannah has a heart attack and dies. So like it just completely takes the wind out of the sails of the, um, the pro, um, business wing of the party and they're just like, okay, I guess Roosevelt. And Roosevelt gets the nomination and, um, you know, he, he, but he, he's very well aware that if he doesn't get the business wing of the party on his side, he may not end up getting the nomination again. So, um, he, he, you're gonna see that's gonna kind of temper his, um, uh, the way he does things. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think he promises that, you know, at, when Mark Hannah was still alive and he was trying to get the business wing to calm down a little bit, he's like, look, I only want one more term. Okay, I promise you, all I want is one more term. Um, meanwhile, the Democrats are still under the control of William Jennings Bryan. William Jennings Bryan is still the most popular man in the party. But he's like, I don't want to go up against this guy. Like Roosevelt is just an absolute, you know, political superstar. And so, um, Jennings decides to, to, to step to the background and be kind of a kingmaker. Um, and they finally, because they don't really have another person who is like got a lot of, um, uh, popularity, they finally settle on a obscure, uh, appeals court judge named Alton Parker. Um, and they try to go like after Roosevelt on racial issues because, uh, Teddy had invited Booker T Washington to the, uh, White House. Um, so they, they try to play up on people's racial fears because at this time, uh, race is becoming more and more of an issue uh, in American society. So, um, that's the campaign of nineteen oh four. Uh, yeah, Faith, go ahead.
Maybe like a really stupid question, but I'm genuinely curious. So since he was the vice president and then the president died and Roosevelt got to take over, could he technically run for two more terms after this? Or since he technically served for that term, can he only run this one more time?
Well, that's an excellent question. Here's the thing, there is no twenty second amendment, right at this point in history. So like, he could have run as many times as he wanted to. So you'll see that his cousin Franklin D Roosevelt will run and, and win four elections. Like that'll be the first time in American history that any president does that. And a lot of that has to do with voter loyalty because of depression era policies and stuff like that. Uh, but, yeah, there is no twenty second amendment. So the twenty second amendment goes into effect after World War Two, um, in the nineteen fifties. So from that point forward, if it's, it's two terms or ten years. So if you serve over half of, of a president's term, you can only serve one more term. But back at this time, he could have run as many times as he wanted to. So you're gonna see, because he is a political superstar and he does want to run again. You're gonna see what happens. A lot of it has to do with the Republican Party itself not wanting him as their leader because of the pro-business wing. So I, I, I won't spoil it, but it is, it is one of the epic stories in American politics as to why Teddy Roosevelt doesn't get back in after this term right here. Um, so anyway, uh, that's the campaign of nineteen oh four and obviously, you know, Teddy Roosevelt has captured that, that populist, you know, um, progressive uh, mantle that the Democrats had, had kind of had for a little while. Um, and so the entire West and the entire North go to Roosevelt and it is an absolute, you know, landslide in terms of, uh, electoral votes and, um, you can see that the only, the solid South goes for, for, um, the Democrats. And so Roosevelt has now won a term in his own right, but remember, he has basically promised, given his word, you know, sworn up and down, that he was only interested in running one more time. So we'll see what happens when the next election rolls around as to whether or not he's going to keep his promise. Alright, um, in our continuing quest to make sure that we, uh, do justice to the rather ugly racial history, um, that has occurred in our country. Uh, we need to kind of zoom in on the South for a little bit because there's another massacre, another spasm of racial violence, uh, is really quite sad. Um, and, and it actually is so bad that it makes foreign, uh, foreign newspapers, like it's the front page story on a, on a popular French, uh, periodical. Um, so essentially, this is how, this is what happens. Um, you have this guy named Thomas Dixon Jr., who is a white supremacist, um, and he writes a fiction book called The Klansman. That became so popular that it was made into a play, um, and the show was actually traveling around the country. And, um, the show was in Atlanta, Georgia. And basically this book slash, which has been adapted into a play, uh, puts forward the idea that in the poorer quarters of towns, black men are raping white women. Um, and it just makes it seem like that is actually happening. So, um, when local newspapers in Atlanta were kind of, uh, running stories about white women being raped, but they're, they're not necessarily by black men, people just assumed because of this popular play that what the play was saying was actually happening, that, that black men were actually raping white women. And so, um, they just formed posses on their own, based on a fictional book, which had been turned into a play. Um, and just decided to start going around the city and handing out the quote unquote justice they thought that, um, these, these black men deserved, even though the black men, you know, in question weren't doing anything. Uh, and, um, is, so it, it ends up turning into this awful race riot. Yes, Autumn, go ahead.
You said that this play was traveling around, so did this happen anywhere else?
No, uh, Atlanta is the only place where people thought it was real because of the coinciding newspaper stories. And it turned into a massacre. Now there are smaller instances of violence, but this like again, to make kind of the, the, the historical list of, of, of violent acts, it has to kind of reach a certain level of, of, you know, numbers of people dying and whatnot. Um, so, yeah, uh, but yeah, this of course produced this impression all over the country. And there were small instances, you know, a couple people here, a couple people there, uh, that were related, but not anything this big on outside of Atlanta. But, um, it, it, the violence got so bad that the governor of Georgia had to send in, um, the, the state militia to quell the rioting because black, uh, neighborhoods were banding together and forming, you know, little, uh, militias of their own to kind of defend themselves. And anywhere between twelve and fifty black citizens were, were killed in the, in the Atlanta massacre of nineteen oh six. And again, the violence was so bad that it made the front page of a French periodical on the other side of the world. And here's an illustration, you know, of, of that violence. Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Did this hurt the Democrats like politically because they're the party of all that stuff?
Uh, not at the time, uh, at the time. Uh not at the time. Uh at the time, racism was a popular idea, like people like people across the country were racist. Wait till you get to wait till we get to the nineteen twenties and you see the Klan become a nationwide organization and do big parades down the middle of. Pennsylvania Avenue in Washington DC. It's it's insane. Like we we are like. You know, instantly, everybody nowadays is like, this is wrong. This is, you know, we condemn this. But back then, people were openly racist. Um and that was just kind of the way it was uh in the country. Peo- white people did not want to be on equal. Terms with 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 black people, even though they didn't believe in slavery. Chase, go ahead.
Did the president give a response to like all of the international like newslines and it breaking out like other countries?
Well, okay, so Roosevelt tends to be less racist than most presidents. Because he does invite black leaders like Booker T Washington to the White House. He does um attempt to. Um reach out to the African American community. But did he do everything in his power as president to quell this? No. He didn't. Uh he allowed this the governor of Georgia to deal with it and he didn't really intervene in any significant way federally. So again, by the standards of the time, Roosevelt is considered. Pro African American in some ways because he at least is willing to talk to their leaders and and treat them. With decency and respect, but he is not like by by today's standards. Didn't didn't do anything really. I mean, so he's not someone who is like a champion of rights. Uh I guess, I don't know if that's. Uh a good enough answer, but that's kind of how it hashed out. Boyer, what was your question?
Did most people like actually believe what was going on here or did they just like choose to to spread it? Because they they wanted the bad publicity for the black community.
Um. I I don't quite understand what you're asking. Like, could you?
So like, did people actually believe that the, you know, they're spreading that like black men were raping white women in these areas? Did they actually believe it? Or were they just saying that? Was everybody just generally saying that to gain hatred for the black community?
Well, I mean, essentially, you know, you have to, you have to remember that that this number of like places where you could get information is relatively limited. At this time, like, you know, you can do, you can read stories in the newspaper. But there is no internet. There is no other way to find out what's going on. Um and people just. Uh this is uneducated whites, poorer, uneducated whites. Who are taking the impression left by this popular uh play. As actual fact, like they do believe, they actually believe that that black men are raping white women in cities. Like it just kind of goes to show how much influence fiction can have sometimes. Um and this this white supremacist's play um creates this impression and people just, they eat it up. They 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 buy it. Uh Kenzie, go ahead.
So was the newspaper like, how are they portraying it? Like, were they just talking about the plot and like mentioning the play or were they just like talking about the plot and not really mentioning it?
No, no, no. The newspaper was running articles about women being raped, okay?
Oh, okay.
White women being raped. People who were uneducated just assumed it was black men. Because they were, it was in some of the poorer quarters of the city, but it wasn't black men who were doing the raping. It was it was white men. And so they just assume that there this stuff is going on, just like in the play. So they're like, let's get a posse together and go deal with this because they're like if there was anything that could incite. You know, whites into like forming posses and doing crazy things. It was the whole, you know. White women are getting raped by black men myth that that would raise its ugly head from time to time. So. Um, yeah, that's the Atlanta massacre of nineteen oh six. Uh again, just one of those ugly episodes in American history that. Really often doesn't make the history textbooks. Uh and so I, you know, uh I think that it is important that we. Make sure we we learn about and and and, you know. Give that equal weight with um other historical events from the time. Alright, uh we do have American um music at the turn of the century and Felicia, I do see that you're here. So. Are you ready for this? Do you wanna do this slide?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so in the late eighteen nineties and early nineteen hundreds, there was a lot of. Recreational growth because there were cheaper ways to print sheet music. So there were more modes of entertainment such as opera houses and saloons and many other different places with live music. And in these places, the biggest genres of music, which were also the newest types of music, were ragtime, jazz and blues. And there were many great composers from this time. So the first person I have isn't on the slide. But it's um Tom Turpin, which is the father of Saint Louis ragtime. He was a ragtime musical music composer and was actually credited with the first published drag by an African American. Called Harlem Rag. Him and his father, John L Turpin, founded the Silver Dollar Saloon where he and other musicians played. And a fun fact is that he was six feet tall and three hundred pounds, so his piano had to be put on raised blocks. Because his stomach was in the way. So um yeah, that's a fun thing and um. Soon a pianist named Scott Joplin arrived in Saint Louis and started playing at the Silver Dollar Saloon. Uh Scott Joplin was one of the greatest ragtime composers of all time. He was born in Texas in eighteen sixty eight, but he moved to Saint Louis later, obviously. One of his first pieces was the Maple Leaf Rag and that ended up being Ragtime's first and most influential hit. And I have a video um that I sent you, but I'll wait till the end for that.
Okay, alright, cuz I I have.
Joplin composed over one hundred rags, including. The Entertainer, Petarine Rag, Elite Syncopations, Pineapple Rag, Gladiolus Rag and Euphonics Sounds. And I have the sheet music to these songs and the structure and sound is all very similar to each other. But it's also very distinct compared to other forms of jazz. And this is because of a musical term called syncopation, where the rhythm is placed on a weak beat. Rather than the typical strong beat, so it sounds like it's out of rhythm, but really it's just off the beat. Um another important composer was John Philip Sousa, who was known for bigger, more regal American military marches. And uh when he was thirteen, he tried to run away and join a circus band, but instead his father enlisted him into um. The Marine Band as an apprentice, which in my opinion is a major downgrade from the circus. But um he was known as the American March King and led the US Marine Band for twelve years. Molding it into the finest military band in the world. He wrote a total of a hundred and thirty six marches. Including uh Stars and Stripes Forever, which is the National March of the United States. And um then there's Jelly Roll Morton, which I won't get into much because he's on the next slide. But he started his musical career in nineteen oh two and was also very important. And I have a quote from Irving Berlin, another great composer. And it says syncopation is the soul of every true American. Ragtime is the best heart raiser and worry banisher I know. And that's all I have.
Right, yeah, I was gonna like try to stop you and play some of uh Scott Joplin real quick and then let you jump into John. John Philip Sousa, um cuz I actually have.
The video I sent is actually of me playing a song by Scott Joplin.
Oh, cool. Okay. Well, I'm gonna I'm gonna get to that. Um so and then I actually have him playing uh the Maple Leaf Rag as well. So um we'll do your video first. But um yeah, and and by the way, notably, Scott Joplin is is black. Okay, and so that is like a significant thing, especially during this time period. Why is that, Felicia? Why is, why is it so significant that we're talking about someone prominent who is also black during this time?
Well, in that time, most uh music being played was uh European music. And so black people weren't getting the uh the. Recogn- recognition they need.
Okay, yeah, and and like the 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 time was so racist. I mean, just based off what we were just talking about with the Atlanta massacre, that that like, you know, black, you know, people who were skilled. In almost anything, we're not getting, like you said, the recognition that they deserved. But in music. Scott Joplin was actually able to become well, well-known and recognized uh in in sort of famous. So this was one of the few areas where 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 a black person could make some advances in their career without getting. Destroyed, so to speak. Um but and and again, there's there are limits to that. Um but it's also interesting that he is going to bring in. Some of the, some of the musical tradition of kind of the African American people, you know, in the South. Who had kept alive African um, you know, forms of. Or 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 kind of ways of of doing music, you know, through through the the slave songs that were sung in the fields, etc. So that there there's, like you were talking about with syncopation, there's a different way of looking at rhythm. There's a different way of looking at things. And so he's gonna be one of the first people to blend um that European music, which was really popular at the time. With kind of those those African ways of looking at things. And of course, really, it's gonna become a big deal in the nineteen twenties. And and that's when jazz becomes a thing. It becomes a worldwide phenomenon, the first American form of music that gets exported all over the world and everybody loves it. But there are these pioneers that are kind of like the early proto-jazz people like Scott Joplin, like Jelly Roll Morton. Who we'll talk about in a minute. Uh so let me find your um. Email really quick here. And boy, does the internet moving slow here. Alright, here. So here we go. Wow. Felicia, I am amazed just watching how like your fingers are moving all over those like that, that is so over.
I recorded that like forty times before I got it right.
Wow, okay. I mean, cuz that sounded so good too. Like like if I played like a little bit of the uh. Of the Scott Joplin playing it here. Here's just a tiny bit of that, like just so we can compare. That sounds almost exactly the same. That's amazing. That I'm so impressed. So, you know, like just compliments to your skill. Uh and just watching, you know, your your fingers move over the keys like that. That's just amazing. Um but um, yeah. So just real quick, Felicia, um what what makes this so different? From like your typical European music, like what what is the uh like you talked about syncopation? Um, how did what we just heard illustrate that?
Uh well, obviously, it's like, it's really upbeat and most classical music. It's uh European. And it's from uh, it's really slow and it's a different kind of, I can't really explain it.
You're you, um, that's essentially what I was getting at. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Really contributed to other forms of music.
Yeah, it just kind of has that 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 real quick movement to it, which again is is that it's that that influence from. Kind of the African musical tradition that had stayed alive uh among African Americans in the South. Uh i- in in the music that they played, that that they enjoyed. Um and then got blended with European music. Because of course, European music was what was being played and all the instruments were European instruments. And so um that Scott Joplin's kind of like the first great innovator and of course. Um there are going to be others, but um John Philip Sousa is gonna take that um that kind of. Very catchy uh way of doing music and he's going to turn it into one of the great, you know, uh musical. Compositions that still is played on a regular basis today. Uh if you are in band, I'm sure you've played this Stars and Stripes Forever. Here's a little bit of that. So yeah, so I mean, like you, you know, we saw American literature breaking away from Europe. Now we're starting to see with ragtime, uh which is was kind of like this this quicker moving, more upbeat. Um music that still bears strong resemblance to a lot of European music. But like um Felicia was saying, has that 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 faster movement to it. Um and of course, this takes us to a guy who really deserves his own slide. Just because he is such an innovator. He is so ahead of his time and that's Jelly Roll Morton. So um Jelly Roll Morton. Is basically considered the first great jazz composer, but jazz isn't a thing yet. So he's ahead of his time. He's like one of those great proto-jazz people that is going to plant the seeds that are going to become. The great movement of jazz when we get to the nineteen twenties. And um of course, also um the blues. Which um are going to emerge as popular around that time as well. So. Excuse me, um basically, he is going to um continue to kind of innovate along the same lines as Scott Joplin. With um uh the Jelly Roll uh Blues, which I'll play you just a little bit of. And then with the King Porter Stomp, which is going to be played in New Orleans. Um uh by Joe King Oliver, who is going to be the mentor of. What probably the greatest of all of the jazz artists uh ever, Louis Armstrong. So here is uh Jelly Roll Blues, which just kind of listen in for that that same innovative. Um way of composing, but with a little extra um. Okay, so Felicia, um since you know how difficult it is to play this uh type of music. How technically difficult is it to play like the Jelly Roll Blues, what we were just listening to, what we were seeing the sheet music for there?
Well, singing, seeing the sheet music, it's like there are a lot of um. Really fast movements, of course, but the way your fingers have to be placed on the keys, it's uh. It's like you have to be on the edge and then you have to, it's really hard to explain without being able to show you. But yeah.
Okay, but is it technically difficult? Like, is this like an extremely technically difficult song to play?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, uh again, Jelly Roll Morton, you have to give him credit for his skill. Like, we don't appreciate how difficult it is to play a song like this, but also that music. that music is, it's got that upbeat kind of, um, that same thing that you saw in Maple Leaf Rag. And uh, and again, here is another African-American artist who becomes popular in a very racist time. Because people are just like, they, they, they're just like, this is good music, you know, and so, um, so, uh, and then this is of course, King Porter Stomp and Joe Oliver, uh, the, the mentor of Louis Armstrong is going to add the coronet to this later. So we're going to come back to this when we come to the age of jazz, but here is that. Okay, so again, I mean, it sounds kind of old compared to stuff we listen to now, but boy, is that difficult to play. Uh, and, and just, it, it's very innovative, uh, like it really does kind of, um, uh, you know, pre-sage much of what will come in music. And so this is a theme that we're going to come back to that really the blending of two great musical traditions, you know, the, the European tradition, obviously, which is very influential in America, but also the African tradition, which was kept alive, uh, through the music that slaves played and songs they sang. And kind of the blending of those two traditions is going to create some of the most innovative and popular music. You know, in American history and of course, and then it's going to spread around the world. This is where we go from consuming everybody else's stuff and saying, you know, we're going to play their music to us coming up with our own and spreading it around the world in the nineteen twenties with jazz. So, um, that was an excellent, excellent presentation. Uh, thank you for uh, taking us down that, that road, uh, Velicia. Alright, so that takes us to, um, one of the next really great natural disasters in American history, which is the San Francisco earthquake of nineteen oh six. Um, and it, it basically at five o'clock in the morning, uh, in the city of San Francisco, there is this massive like earthquake, which ruptures natural gas mains, causing fires to break out all across the city. So not only does it destroy, you know, buildings by shaking them and causing them to kind of fall apart, but also it, um, it causes fires and explosions all over the city of San Francisco. And it, it, it destroys twenty-five thousand buildings and kills three thousand people. It is the second worst natural disaster in American history, next to the Galveston Hurricane of nineteen hundred. Um, and so, um, President Roosevelt doesn't hesitate this time. Like, I mean, it, you know, there, he didn't intervene in the Atlanta massacre, but when it comes to this, he, he sends in the army. The army just comes in and just starts providing relief for all of the survivors. Um, uh, you know, supplies, makeshift shelters, but really the San Francisco earthquake of nineteen oh six is significant. Yes, uh, Nick.
Um, at this point in time, do people know what caused earthquakes?
Um, in terms of the science, uh, I think plate tectonics as a science had, had uh, developed to the point. But actually, I don't know the answer to that question. That's a, that's a science history question. Um, that I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they, I'm like, I'm just, this is just kind of off of my vague recollection here, but I think that at this point, the theory as to what caused earthquakes was, you know, plate tectonics, you know, it was, it was an accepted scientific theory and, you know, the plates moving around the, the, the mantle of the earth, but um, don't take me as, as, as an authority on that one. Uh, excellent question. And then Chase, go ahead.
Was there any big businesses that capitalized off the recovery of San Francisco?
We're actually about to get to the financial fallout from this because it is, so I am going to answer your question in like a minute because there is, um, it actually is the opposite. It, it is going to cause a financial mess, like it's the perfect storm, which is going to create a national panic. So, um, do, like, it's really more, it's like government contracts, you know, like i- if, if anyone were to profit, it would be, uh, companies that got government contracts to, you know, provide supplies, you know, et cetera. So I'm sure there are, I just, they're not like noteworthy enough for like your history class to like really cover. Uh, Scott, what was your question?
Was California back then like super dry like it is now? Did those fires spread all over the place?
Oh, oh, you're talking about in terms of like forests and everything like that, like dryness? No, this was just within the city. So like this isn't out in the forested areas. This is like in the city itself where those fires occurred, just because natural gas lines were not made to withstand earthquakes. And of course, now the building codes in California are, they include, you know, that buildings must like be built in order to withstand earthquakes because a lot of the deaths were caused by buildings collapsing, people being inside. The safest place to actually be in the middle of an earthquake is outside where uh, nothing can fall on you, um, because then the ground just shakes, but you don't have stuff collapsing on you and killing you. Uh, Boyer, yes, go ahead.
Was California at this point like how it is today where it's like one of the giant hubs of like trade in the country? Like, was it a huge population over there yet or no?
You're anticipating the question. Well, if you look at the electoral maps, like when we talk about, you know, um, the, like, so next time we, we, uh, you'll see that the population isn't near as big in, in California as it is now. So, but you are anticipating exactly what I'm about to get to here. Um, San Francisco is the gateway through which all, um, it's like a big port essentially. It's like New York City and, um, it's like through all of the goods which flow into the country, a lot of them come in through San Francisco because San Francisco has such a nice harbor. Uh, so these big ships, you know, and of course, we now see those big ships with all the, the containers stacked on them, you know, and San Francisco was still a huge port of entry. But back then it wasn't as diversified, you know, as it is nowadays. There's more than one big port uh, on the West Coast, but like back then, San Francisco was the big port. So if you suddenly take the big port out, it, it cuts trade, like all these goods that are flowing into the country on a regular basis, suddenly that's gone. And so it's going to have a huge financial impact. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say?
So, um, didn't most of the population, like, like how they got most of the population was the gold rush in forty-nine?
That's how it got enough to get to that sixty thousand person threshold. Yeah. So that's like, that's where they're, the base for their population comes from. But, but really more and more people are going to migrate to California over time. Um, the Dust Bowl, the Dust Bowl is going to create a huge migration from farms in the Midwest out to California. There's and, and so over time, more and more people are going to move there. Um, but uh, yeah, it's just when we get to the next electoral map, look and see how many electoral votes California has compared to the rest of the country and you'll see that they're not like the megalith, like population wise that they back then that they are now. But I mean, they have a significant population, but it's not like nearly as big. So, um, anyway, there is a guy who is in the middle of trying to corner the market on the stock of a former company that he used to work with, um, the United Copper Trust. So essentially, by cornering the market on the stock of this company, which has kind of almost a monopoly over copper, he is trying to corner the copper market. And so this was a scheme, like all of these people had basically taken out loans and were all investing at the same time. They were all kind of like working together to um, buy up this stock, cause the stock to go sky high. And then, once it was sky high, sell it. Of course, a whole bunch of people who like got on the train, so to speak, and, and bought that stock as it was going up, wouldn't know that when, when the principal investors were all going to sell. So then they would make a boatload of money and all the other investors would get, you know, uh, basically ruined because the stock would drop when they, when they sold all at once. Um, so this scheme was in the works when the earthquake hits. Yes, Zach, go ahead. Zach, you have your hand up.
Alright, I forgot to put it down.
Okay, uh, Ethan, go ahead.
Was this like a pr- one of the, so like, has these pump and dump schemes gone all the way back since the stock market existed or is this relatively new?
No, this happens all the time, like the, like the.
It's just first time this has, has such a massive scale.
Right, like nowadays, uh, it's, it's often what, what they, you know, they, they short things, like they know a company is going under, so they'll, they'll short the position like dramatically and like way overdo it.
Like so, this, this, at this time is when the whole bull ideology, or no, the whole bear ideology hasn't really come to fruition yet. It's all about how can we get it up and only up?
Alright, if you see my, if you see me on the camera, this was the eighteen hundreds up until like the, the Great Depression, you know, boom, bust, like, it's like, it's a, it's a roller coaster ride, okay? So what you're talking about is after the Great Depression, when the government like gets involved in the stock market and gets it and puts controls on the financial world, then it's not boom bust, you know, like panic of eighteen nineteen, panic of eighteen thirty-seven, like, you know, massive financial panics that like literally wipe out thousands of, you know, companies and, and hundreds of thousands of investors. Uh, instead it's more gentle, you know, upswing in the market, that's a bull market, downswing in the market, that's a bear market, but it's kind of on a, like a very gentle kind of thing. Uh, so.
Yeah, I heard that like mainly stuff that was controlled by bull markets caused those very volatile fluctuations.
Well, unfettered capitalism is like a wild animal. Like, it's like trying to ride, you know, like the, the, the metaphor I use is like trying to ride one of those wild, like a wild horse that's trying to buck you like you see in a rodeo. Um, or, um, you know, just basically, um, you know, you know, so like, it, it's going to take you to some really high heights, you know, and people are going to get really rich, but then of course, that's a bubble and then it pops and then just the bottom falls out in a hole.
I'm guessing the short hasn't really become mainly viable at the time because it, you couldn't do it, you couldn't sell it quick enough.
Yeah, the financial services industry won't really become a thing.
Yeah, cause you had, still had to do it through loan contracts like on paper.
Much, much later, yeah, much, much later. So, and that's when computers are really started to become used to kind of manage markets and things like that. And then Faith, go ahead. What were you gonna ask?
I don't know if you already let her in, but Kenzie asked me to.
I just, and I just pressed the button. So yes, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer went dead.
Okay, no problem. Uh, so, um, basically he's in the middle of this, of this thing, this scheme. And then the, the, the great San Francisco earthquake hits while they're still buying up all the stock. So when the, when the stock market gets gut punched, like by something like the sick great San Francisco earthquake because of the massive loss of capital from all that trade suddenly being cut off, like it's just, there's a massive artery of trade coming in through the West Coast and suddenly it's just boom, it's just cut off. Uh, when that happens, it rocks the financial market. So like the craze they were hoping to create around this stock doesn't happen because the entire market goes down because of the, um, earthquake. Well, that puts Mr. Hines and all of his fellow investors who have taken out these massive loans from these banks into a very bad position because suddenly now that they aren't going to make any money. They're trying to get out and, and hold on to what they can and a lot of them can't pay back these massive loans, which puts big banks on the hook. Because now big banks are in a very fragile position because of the whole, you know, uh, you gotta have a certain amount of capital in your vault, uh, in case depositors want to come and get their money out. And now because you put these big loans out, you can't do it. And now people start making runs on the banks. This was so bad, and Ethan, I see your hand, I'll get to you in a sec. This was so bad, the, 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 the runs on the banks were so bad and the stock market collapse was so bad that it looked like the entire financial system might collapse this time. So JP Morgan and, um, some of the other big financial giants, they all just step in and they just start buying up stocks. They're like, ooh, look, bargain price on these stocks, bargain price on this, bargain price on that. And they just buy, 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 buy. And that actually stops the panic because really it's selling panic. And so people are like, wait a minute, the stock market's going back up. Uh, you know, and then all of a sudden, you know, it kind of evens out. But the big boys, like the big players, the, the pillars of the financial system had to step in and literally risk much of their own fortunes in order to prevent the collapse of the system. And this is a warning sign, like, they're like, okay, we can't have this happen again. We have to have some sort of safeguard. So Ethan, what was your question?
I start to see a pattern in all these panics that it's usually caused by fractional banking.
Right, yeah, you, uh, like, you, you're taking out loans, uh, to, um.
Basically having more loans than you can actually pay, have capital for.
But that's where, you know, risk is what makes people like wealthy, you know, like they're, that, that's how businessmen kind of take, you know, what little capital they have and, and grow their companies or their banks into big ones is by taking all of these calculated risks. And so, you know, the people who play it safe just stay the same size. Um, it's.
It seems the people who actually want to have their money in a bank get kind of thumbed every single time.
Well, yeah, and it's just, but otherwise, you gotta carry big bags of money around or you gotta like lock it in something, which somebody could didn't just, excuse me, break into. And, uh, if, if that happens, then you're just out of luck, you know, like, so at least it's safer than, you know.
Is there any other panics before the Great Depression?
This is one, and then there's going to be another one in nineteen fourteen, which is going to coincide with the beginning of World War One because of connections to the European financial world. And then that will be it until we hit the great, the Great Depression because the roaring, right after World War One, we are in a decade-long bubble in, you know, the roar.
It has to come crashing at some.
Yes, and that comes crashing to earth in the stock market crash in nineteen twenty-nine. So, uh, that's the big one. But each time this happens, notice how it threatens the entire system more and more, like we're riding, we have ridden this, this kind of wild animal of the, of unfettered capitalism to greater and greater and greater wealth all through the eighteen hundreds. But each time we have one of these panics, we have one of these disasters, it, it threatens the entire system more and more. So, um, the, um, the big boys, uh, so to speak, the financial, um, you know, giants of the time, uh, they basically, um, get together and, um, they have a meeting and, um, that, at that meeting, they're like, okay, we have to have a government backstop against this kind of thing ever happening again. Because somebody like, it's like, when big banks get in trouble, who bails them out? And that really is like the, 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 the critical question is, who is the lender of last resort? And the big financial institutions, which by the way, also had given millions and millions of dollars in loans to banks to prop them up. They're like, we can't do this again. Like this, this threatens our existence, you know, so they're like, the government has to step in next time and become the lender of last resort. Okay, so you can see that I have that underlined right there. Um, so the, the National Monetary Commission, um, was, was kind of charged with, um, creating a, a more stable financial system. Uh, and this was at the, the urging of, of the big, you know, Wall Street bankers, et cetera. And, um, the National Monetary Commission essentially, um, uh, they meet on Jekyll's Island off the coast of Georgia, uh, since, you know, one of those big secret meetings where the, the elite people are making, you know, secret plans, so to speak, but really they're just looking for a way to, to make it so that the financial system doesn't collapse the next time we have one of these big crashes. And, um, they recommend that we re-establish a central bank. Remember, we hadn't had a national bank in our country since Andrew Jackson killed the Second Bank of the United States way, way back in the eighteen thirties. So they say we need a national bank. And, um, this of course is going to lead to the creation of the Federal Reserve Act, which is really, really important. So when we get to President Wilson and then the creation of the Federal Reserve, that's where all of these ideas come from. But they basically, uh, also, uh, talk about the, the need for an emergency currency. Um, where like, if there's not enough gold in the treasury Um, where like if there's not enough gold in the treasury to back up the dollar. That special emergency notes that aren't backed by anything except the good faith and credit of the United States government. Could be created, there had to be a mechanism by which they could be created. Now, this is going to be taken. And turned into something way bigger than these guys ever anticipated. Uh, Autumn, what were you gonna say? Autumn?
Was there a reason for the National Monetary Commission to meet in secret or is that just?
It's just kind of, you know, like the 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 big boys are all like, it's like the adults are talking, um, you know? We don't want anybody else inserting themselves into this debate. We know what we're doing. We know what we're talking about. But also they wanted to set up a system which benefited them, of course, as well. Um, but, um, I can't understate how important this is because what's eventually gonna happen to the dollar? Like Great Depression, et cetera. We've talked about this from time to time. Ethan, go ahead.
They're gonna try and take it off the gold.
Right, and the only way you can do that is through a mechanism like this, kind of like a special emergency currency mechanism. So the Aldrich-Reland Act of nineteen oh eight is going to basically give the government the ability to issue a an emergency currency, a fiat currency, a currency that has no backing uh in gold. So legally, this is how the US government was able to do that. And of course, uh, they are going to take the National Monetary Commissions, um, which they wish this act will create. Um, uh, advice on, um, you know, basically reestablishing a central bank. Um, and that is, of course, gonna become the Federal Reserve, which is gonna forever change the American financial system. So we'll we'll be getting to that in a little while. Meanwhile, um, there is a, um, kind of a, um, interesting little, um, situation that develops. And this is a complicated story, so, um. Let me, let me kind of, you know, just, I'm gonna go through it step by step. Um, so first off. We have prestige around the world as a power, like America is on the map. And the guy who put us there is Teddy Roosevelt. Teddy Roosevelt put us on the map. Um, but, you know, so he's all Mr. Gung Ho in public, but behind the scenes. He does not wanna get into a fight that that he's worried that we can't win. And there's another rising naval power in the world. We're gonna talk about this, um, uh. I don't know if I have, I have, I'm pretty sure I have a slide on this, uh, on the, um, maybe I don't, um, on the Rush, the Russo-Japanese War. Do I have a slide on the Russo-Japanese War? I don't think I do, actually. Okay, so anyway, um, the Russo-Japanese War, uh, happens in nineteen, from nineteen oh four to nineteen oh five, where um, Russia and Japan get into a spat. And Russia is one of the great powers of the world and they have like two navies. They have a Pacific Navy and a a and an Atlantic Navy. And Japan was like the medieval Samurai Society just a couple of decades prior. But they had gone through extreme makeover country addition where they in the Meiji Restoration, you know, Ethan talked about this before. And they just radically changed their society and go full industrialization. And so they had built a modern navy that was like way more advanced than a lot of the navies in the area, including Russia's navy. So when they get into this ba- this fight with with Russia, um, the, um, the Russians, uh, get beat, they but they lose their Pacific Fleet and their, um, uh, Atlantic Fleet, which sails like a long way just to get beat, uh, in the Battle of Tsushima. So, um, that puts Japan on the map as a as a significant naval power, cuz everybody in the world's like, what? Uh, and of course, Japan didn't have the resources to be in a long land war with Russia, so they had to, um, uh, basically say, okay, well, uh, we need an arbiter and Russia was looking to save face cuz they had just lost both of their navies. And so the the United States actually ends up being the neutral third party arbiter cuz we're like the other power in the Pacific. And so, uh, Teddy Roosevelt gets to negotiate the Treaty of Portsmouth. Um, yes, uh, Ethan.
I think after the Russo-Japanese War, they pushed for another plan that would basically triple the navy in Japan.
Yeah, right, like Japan just doubles down because they're like, that's awesome, we beat, you know, we beat one of the great powers of the world, we're now on the map.
Yeah, I think the biggest show they had, um, was mainly of, it's like America was like, wait, they have a bigger battleship than us?
Yeah, we're gonna get to all that like, but but basically Japan's on the map too, so we're on the map cuz we beat Spain and took their empire from them. And Japan's on the map cuz they beat, uh, Russia, which is one of the great powers of the world. So, um, there's a situation that develops on the on the, uh, West Coast having to do with like nativism and prejudice against Asians. Uh, where the San Francisco s- school board segregates the high schools. They say, okay, white kids are gonna get to go to this high school. But Asian kids are gonna have to go to this segregated high school. So it it's kind of like what what is happening to to black people in the South. But it's just, it's it's racism against Asians in the on the West Coast and, um, Japan is very loyal to the people who are part of their family, so to speak, who have moved into other countries. And there is actually talk in Japan about going to war with the United States over the treatment of these these Japanese, um, you know, high school students. And so, um, President Roosevelt, you know, for all of his bluster and his big stick diplomacy and and, you know, his muscular foreign policy. Does not wanna get in a war with Japan. Okay, so but he doesn't want people to know that he doesn't think we can take on Japan. So he steps in, like, this is weird because normally, like, when a school board is doing things, you don't have the President of the United States stepping in and like suddenly negotiating things. So he steps in to this little kerfluffle in San Francisco and basically like says, okay, hey, hold on a second. I want to make an international agreement with Japan. Japan's gonna slow immigration on their side. And on our side, we're not gonna segregate the schools. Okay, so you guys have to stop that right now. And so by presidential, you know, kind of fiat, he comes in and just stops that whole process. And this is what's known as the Gentleman's Agreement of nineteen oh seven. But people who are like, like astute political observers are like, wait a minute. Roosevelt is stepping in? They were talking about going to war, weren't they? Is he afraid of Japan? And so there's talk among the more, you know, with it. People who are who are observing politics that Roosevelt is actually afraid of the Japanese. And so Roosevelt knows he has to somehow put a stop to this talk before it becomes mainstream or his entire political image and muscular foreign policy and bluster and all that is going to get like the the bubble's gonna pop and people are gonna see that it's not like what he what, you know, what he wants it to project it as. So this is the gr- one of the greatest PR moves of all time. This is seen, you know, people, when they just look at this event, they're like, oh, you know, America, military stuff, you know, like, et cetera. But no, this is actually a PR move. So, um, Roosevelt basically says to the to the Navy, which really is still kind of operating off of those ships that we had built in the eighteen eighties, uh, under the Harrison administration, which had won us the Spanish-American War. Um, he says to them, cuz like by now, we're talking, it's like almost been two decades, so it these like some of the ships that Japan has are 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 better than our ships, like they're more, they're more up to date. Um, and so he says to them, I want you to take the entire navy, both fleets, combine it together into one massive fleet. And paint it white. And they're like, sir, paint it white? Anybody wanna guess? What, what, what is the thing with painting it white? Why? Yeah, go ahead, Ethan. What were you gonna say?
Usually painting a ship white is meant to show like a sign of peace. And or, oh, we're the people who brings around peace in the world and we're not gonna wreck everything.
Okay, okay, so like if you saw a flotilla of of white ships, you wouldn't be feeling as threatened. Um, okay.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you 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 do have a point to a certain extent, yes.
But also to mock also because I think it was like British ships at the time. Also had a similar theme.
But also when ships are first made, a lot of times they're white, you know, like the the they're painted in many parts, not the entire ship, but a lot of it is painted white. So it makes our our navy look brand new, even though it's not. Like our our navy is like twenty years old for the most part, but it looks brand new because it's all been painted white. And then he sends them on a goodwill tour around the world. And when you take the combined Pacific and Atlantic fleets and put them together, it looks like a lot of ships. And when they're all gleaming white ships, it looks like we have a brand new navy. That is sailing into these various ports around the world, getting pictures taken of it, you know, which go into newspapers all over the world. And suddenly, it looks like America is is showing off its strength, is showing off its 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 military muscle around the world, even though really we've painted the ships white on purpose to make it make them look newer than they actually are. And, um, the Great White Fleet becomes a big deal, like it's in newspapers all over the world and now all the people are talking about, well, that's, you know, pretty bold of Roosevelt's, you know, sending the entire American fleet into, you know, these ports. What if somebody thinks it's, um, you know? A a a threat, what if we're, you know, people think that we're trying to attack them or something, you know, and so and so again, it it feeds into that image that that Teddy wants where, you know, he seems really, really aggressive. And we do stop in at Japan as well and the Japanese bring out little, um, uh, you know, flowers to give to soldiers, et cetera. And so it makes Japan look like they're kind of like, wow, respecting us. Like, and so the all the talk of Teddy being afraid of Japan kind of goes away. And the Great White Fleet really, um, kind of, you know, makes a a a big impression all over the world. Yeah, Chase, go ahead.
Did any other country try to one up us after we did that?
Um, in terms of like sending a big fleet around the world on a goodwill tour, not that I'm aware of, but Europeans are just like. Yeah, but if we did that, it would be even more amazing, but we already know how awesome we are, so we don't have to. Uh, so, yeah, no, like I, there's no other big fleets that go on massive world tours at this time. Uh, but it, you know, it is, it that is an interesting question. Um, and go ahead, Ethan.
Isn't this also kind of weird, you know, with the whole thing of Germany building up its navy at increasingly shocking rates?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're we're getting to the Tirpitz Plan, yeah, and, um, so actually, I don't know if I have a separate slide on it because I do, if it was, if this was world history, I would have a separate slide.
Does this actually encourage Germany to make boats even faster?
The Germany is primarily motivated by its rivalry with Britain. So actually, I think I have this coming up on rising tensions in Europe where I kind of take a whole bunch of European history and I kind of like shorten it down.
Yeah, I think that's the slide after the next.
Oh, okay, so we're we're coming up on it real quick here, yeah. So, um, but yeah, so you're actually anticipating something we'll be getting to in just a moment, so let me, let me just hold on to that thought for a second. But I did wanna mention one more thing. Um, so Japan then after this negotiates another agreement with us called the Route Takahira Agreement of nineteen oh eight. Where they endorse our policy, the open door policy, which they had been one of the holdouts, where they would not endorse the open door policy in China, but they do. So it makes us seem like we're intimidating Japan a little bit, you know, we send our fleet over there and then right after that, they make this agreement with us where they endorse the open door policy. And of course, they had their own reasons for that, which had nothing to do with being intimidated by America. But this is just one of the greatest PR moves by any president ever, like it, he shuts down all that talk. So you you, this is where you get to see the kind of the clever politician that Teddy Roosevelt really is. Um, you know, kind of, you know, uh, s- separate from the image that he often has. All right, we do need to talk about another state coming into the country, which is like, it's kind of odd. People are like, well, why? Why are we talking about this now? Like, hasn't that already happened in most of the West? And the reason is because, um, Oklahoma, the entire state of Oklahoma, which was in a state at this point, was just a giant Native American reservation for all of the tribes from the east. Which they had given rel- relatively generous grants of land to, granted, they weren't like the best. You know, they weren't, you know, compared to the lands that they had lost in the east, you know, but the Trail of Tears had taken many tribes like the Cherokee to, um, Oklahoma. And, um, at this point, um, the the Dawes Act of eighteen eighty seven, which had, uh, remember, I don't know if you guys remember that, but that was uh, a law which said, you know, each Native American family by this point should know how to farm. And they're going to get a farm and all the rest of that reservation land is gonna be opened up to white settlement. So, uh, in eighteen eighty nine, President Harrison had opened up a ton of of territory within Oklahoma i- i- into white settlement. And so, um, this was known as the Oklahoma Land Rush and, um, uh, there were a bunch of people who were kind of lined up, like they were all like on a like a race, like a s- like on a starting line. And then when they kind of, you know, gave the signal, everybody was gonna rush out and try to make their land claims. Well, some people had snuck across the line earlier and had gotten some of the best claims staked out already and those people were called Sooners. Because they had gone across the line sooner, so you know, if you're, if you're interested in where the the name Oklahoma Sooners comes from, that's where it comes from. But, um, uh, Congress then passed the Curtis Act in eighteen ninety eight, which dissolved any tribal jurisdictions in Oklahoma, really, which had once been this massive Native American reservation, now was suddenly kind of reaching a threshold, a a white population threshold of sixty thousand people. And so it makes a state constitution and applies to come into the Union as the forty sixth state uh, on November sixteenth nineteen oh seven. So a little bit of backstory there as to how Oklahoma becomes a state with white people in it. All right, so, um, over to Europe, so. Uh, basically, we talked about this already, you know, the Kaiser gets rid of Bismarck. Uh, and basically is taking Germany on kind of this this really aggressive course, you know, he he wants Germany to quote have its place in the sun. It's it's one of the greatest powers in Europe in terms of its land military. Um, but they don't have colonies to match. They don't have a colonial empire to match. And of course, they're jealous of Great Britain. And so kind of going back to what Ethan was saying, uh, in nineteen hundred, they had revealed a plan uh, to basically make the German Navy the rival of the British Navy and and build it to that point, um, which was called the Tirpitz Plan. And and essentially, you know, this made, you know, Britain very, very worried that, um, that Germany was going to take away their empire, you know? Kind of due to them what America had done to Spain. And, um, so the, at the time, Bismarck's Concert of Europe was still in operation. Concert of Europe was like basically a way to prevent any, you know, one power from becoming too powerful. It keeps the peace in Europe. So it's like if any one power gets too greedy, the other four are going, and this is like from the five big powers. This would be Britain, France, um, Germany, Austria-Hungary and Russia. Then the other four powers are all gonna gang up on that one power and basically call them on the carpet and say, you can't hit, you can't do that. You can't grab that much land in that area because you're you're basically upsetting the balance of world power. And none of the great powers, I mean, including Germany or Britain, could take on all four of the other ones at once. And so it had kept the peace for a long time, but Germany was getting so aggressive that some of the great powers were starting to think maybe we should be in an alliance with each other just to counterbalance Germany. And of course, this is what Bismarck had had not never wanted to happen was an alliance system. And so, um, uh, Britain continues to get worried as, um, Kaiser Wilhelm sends a congratulatory telegram to Paul Kruger, um, like if if we were doing like AP Euro or AP World, we'd be talking about the Boer Wars, which are, um, some wars down in, uh, South Africa where um, these Boer republics, which were Dutch, you know, kind of settlers, the 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 previous Dutch settlers who had settled in South Africa first, but then moved inland when the British took over after the Napoleonic Wars. They had kind of created their own little areas, but they had, they were sitting on top of all kinds of diamonds and gold and stuff. And so Cecil Rhodes had kind of like, you know, gotten these wars going. It's a long story. But anyway, um, the Boers turned out to be very capable guerrilla warfare fighters and actually had beaten the British military in the first Boer War. And so, um, Kaiser Wilhelm had been like, wow, you beat the British military. And so he sent this telegram to Paul Kruger, the president of Tranzwall, one of the two republics and and congratulated him. And of course, this made Britain worry even more. He they're like, oh, so when we lose a colonial war, Germany's happy about it, you know? And then, um, uh, the Kaiser realizing that he was causing tensions to rise with Britain. Uh, the Kaiser realizing that he was causing tensions to rise with Britain, tried to. Take the temperature down a notch by giving an interview uh, to this British newspaper called the Daily Telegraph. And this turns out to be one of the worst interviews of all time, uh, because he tries to basically say, okay, Britain. Don't worry, we're not after your empire. It's all the other powers of Europe that are after your empire. And so he lists off all the other great powers, plus some of the minor ones. And that just basically irks the rest of the big powers of Europe and they're all like, what? And so, and then he like accuses the British of being crazy. He's like, you all are mad, mad, mad as March Hares for thinking that we want your empire. And when the interview was over, the diplomatic staff in Germany were like. Don't ever do that again, please. Like, they're like, just don't give interviews. Like, that was, that was a disaster. It's, it made things ten times worse. And so um, tensions are now to the point where um, European powers are worried. About this, this, this very aggressive Germany that is kind of emerged in the heart of Europe. Yes, Ethan.
Um, are they basically kind of worried about another Napoleon-like figure coming back up?
Well.
Do they still remember the Napoleonic Wars?
Okay, so the concept of a concert of Europe had first been proposed back at the end of the Napoleonic Wars. Um, where basically they're, they're like, if France ever tries to pull something like that again. All the other powers are going to gang up on them. Okay, so it was like, uh, that was, that was kind of the beginning of that concept, but really. It came into its own when, when Otto von Bismarck, you know, united all the little German kingdoms uh, by attacking France. In the Franco-Prussian War of eighteen, of the eighteen seventies and essentially created Germany when they all, when they won, when they beat Napoleon the third and won. Um, and you know, that basically created this kind of, this German superpower in the middle of Europe. And so in order to keep the rest of the European powers from feeling too threatened and um. Kind of all ganging up on this brand new country which just beat France was, which was still riding its reputation from the days of Napoleon. Throughout the eighteen hundreds until the eighteen seventies, um, that's when um. Bismarck revived that idea and said to the other powers, look, we don't want that. We want little pieces. So they divided up Africa on paper. They didn't get into a fight over Africa in the Berlin Conference. And Germany got an empire by basically, you know, participating and they had colonies in Africa, but. You know, they, their empire wasn't near as big as the other empires, so.
Basically, they're afraid of the agreement falling out.
So, so right, so essentially that had worked, that had kept the peace all through like the eighteen seventies, eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties. But then when Kaiser Wilhelm the second fires Bismarck in eighteen ninety and then just takes Germany in this much more aggressive course, the whole world. Is worried that Germany is just going to like start just go in full wrecking ball on everybody else's empires. Like, everybody's worried that they, that Germany is just not going to be happy until they have like a. Big empire and the only way to get it is to take it from somebody else, because all, every, all of the territory around the world had been gobbled up by this point. So um, this presents another interesting situation because what was left of Spain's empire? You know, it's like when uh, there's blood in the water, the sharks start circling. Well. The Spanish-American War had basically kind of said, there's blood in the water when it comes to Spain. Spain is wounded. And so the European powers were like, okay, America got the islands that Spain owned. But they have, they have territory in Africa and that territory is valuable too. And so the most valuable piece of land that um, Spain had in Africa was Morocco. It was right across the Strait of Gibraltar from Spain and um, everybody wanted. And especially Germany, because Germany needed more territory. The Kaiser wanted them to have their place in the sun. And so essentially what happens is, and we're, we're taking the long story of the Moroccan crisis and kind of just, I'm giving you the nutshell version. Because this is AP Euro, this is AP World. Um, but essentially, um, the Kaiser kind of. Makes these saber rattling speeches, which are aggressive speeches, like if there will be war, if we don't get control of Morocco. And France, which had a lot of territory around Morocco under its control, the, what was later known as French West Africa. All of those, you know, territories around it. Um, they also were a presence there. And so it looked like there might be a war where, because Germany had made these really aggressive speeches. And like they were going to go to war if they didn't get control of Morocco and France had kind of moved into Morocco and taken possession of a lot of it. And um, the German military leaders uh, secretly had come to the Kaiser and said, look. We're getting our military to the point where we can handle a big war with other powers, but we're not there yet. Like, you have to, you have to back down, because if you don't, you're going to get us into a war that we're going to lose. And so the Kaiser was in a real pickle because he, he needed a way out, but he didn't want to destroy his image. Of the kind of the aggressive, you know, great leader sort of thing, sort of thing. And so he basically um. Was looking for somebody who could kind of step in and be like, hey, everybody. Uh, we want, I, let, let's arbitrate, you know. And there are other European powers were also interested in keeping the peace and not having a, a massive war between the great powers. And so there was a country that had already kind of stepped in as a neutral third party in another war. Because they were kind of way out across an ocean. What, what power is that? That's kind of way out there across the ocean that might say, hey, everybody calm down. We want to be a neutral third party and step in. Think Russo-Japanese War. Who stepped in and was the neutral third party arbiter in the Russo-Japanese War between the Russians and the Japanese? When they needed somebody to step in?
United States.
United States. So there were, there were um, diplomatic feelers that went out and basically said, hey, United States. You know, would you be willing to, and so Teddy, you know, responding to these kind of secret, you know, messages that had been kind of floating. Through the diplomatic channels, um, says, he, he makes this announcement in front of the world. He's like, hey. The United States notices that um, there is, the temperatures are rising over in this Moroccan crisis. And we propose a international peace conference in Algeria, uh, in Algerisus, which was a city in Algeria. Uh, which is a French colony, um, to kind of um, take the temperature down. And so. Um. Basically, they have a conference, a big conference called the Algerisus Conference. And um, at that conference. Uh, Germany and France agree to this kind of power sharing thing where the, where the Kaiser can kind of back off of his earlier war talk. Without seeming too aggressive, uh, but at the same time not lose face with, with his people. And um, that basically allows everybody to kind of back down. And in Morocco is power shared, but really the Germans get the worst end of it and the French get what they want. And Britain and France kind of are, are becoming more and more like in tandem, because Britain is worried about. Germany's navy and Germany's intentions and France, which shares a border with Germany, is worried about this big kind of, you know. German superpower on their border and, and their intentions, you know, in terms of their, what they want in terms of colonies as well. And so peace is, is restored. And here is the most ironic thing of all. The most warlike president we've ever had, Teddy Roosevelt, hands down, one of the most warlike presidents we've ever had. Gets the Nobel Peace Prize because he is, he's basically negotiated peace in two wars. So Mr. Gung Ho, Mr. Big Stick Diplomacy, Mr. You know, invading countries all over Latin America with, you know, impunity. He gets the Nobel Peace Prize. It's crazy. I mean, it's, it's so ironic that someone so warlike would get. That prize, uh, but that is the Algerisus Conference and the first president to ever get the Nobel Peace Prize is Teddy Roosevelt. All right, so this is important. You have to know this because World War One is not going to make any sense unless you know this, okay? And it's a little counterintuitive. So um, when you hear the word allies. You're going to think alliance and that's not true. That's so um, essentially. What happens is Britain and France have already kind of entered into this, this like. Sort of alliance called the Antenne Corgeaux, where they're, they're, they're putting aside their old rivalry and they're, they're like, kind of banding together against Germany. That was accelerated by the Moroccan crisis. France had been basically making loans to Russia, which was desperately looking to modernize everything. Its military was way out of date, that the Russo-Japanese War had, had made that clear. And Germany, which used to give Russia all kinds of loans, had kind of stopped doing that under the Kaiser, which was really stupid. Uh, so Bismarck's worst nightmare had basically happened where there was an alliance. Where Germany, in the event of a war, would have to split its forces and basically divide its army in half. And send half of it one direction and half of it the other. And um, that was a Franco-Russian alliance. That was, that was something that Bismarck had said is the absolute worst. And so he had always wanted to kind of isolate France and, and. And maintain a friendship with Russia, but the French had basically, in the Kaiser's like stupidity, had, had basically taken advantage of. Russian, you know, uh, needing funds and had created this alliance. So France and Russia and Britain. Basically end up, and this is a long complicated process, we're, we're shortening it up and we're just kind of hitting it in a nutshell. They form an alliance known as the Triple Antenne. Okay, the Triple Antenne during World War One. Will later be known as the Allies. So make sure you have that down, that this, this will become the Allies. Um. Germany is now by itself kind of having to split its forces. And they realize that the other German power, the, their old rival, Austria. Uh, from the days of the War of the Austrian Succession and the Seven Years' War and all of that, um. That they need help because Austria had a whole bunch of territory in the Balkans in this area out to the east of it. That was full of non, non-German peoples, many of them Slavic, kind of similar to, to, to the Russians in, in their ethnicity. And Russia had, had been their big rival in this area. And so um, and, and there was a, an independent country down. In um, the Balkans called Serbia, which, which Russia had a special interest in trying to uh, help. Because they were um, uh, uh, they were Slavic as well. And so the Tsar, who was very unpopular at home, there had been a, a revolution against the Tsar in nineteen oh five, where he had had to give up some of his power. Uh, and create the Duma, which was a legislature, but then he like undercut the Duma and took all of his power back and, and people were kind of seething. They wanted a democracy, they wanted something more. And so the Tsar is looking for ways to unite the, the, the people of Russia behind him. And one of those ways is to um, support this other Slavic country against the aggression of Austria-Hungary. Which wants to shut down Serbia. Serbia is pushing an idea called Pan-Slavism, where they're like, all Slavs should be free. And that of course would mean that Austria-Hungary would lose most of their territory. So Austria-Hungary needs a, needs an ally against Russia, which Russia is like. Big Brother Slav to Little Brother Serbia. And so they, they're, Germany needs an ally. Austria needs an ally. They both uh, have Russia as an enemy. So uh, Germany and Austria enter into an alliance, but they're like, uh, we need another power in it to make it seem like it's a big alliance. Like that is kind of on par with the, the big powers in the other alliance. So they get an up and coming power, um, which wants territory and doesn't have a lot of it. Um, you know, kind of in a similar situation in Germany, they had united in the eighteen seventies as a country. And by that time, most of the, most of the colonies around the world had already been gobbled up, so they didn't have much of an empire, but they wanted one. They wanted to be a big power, Italy. So Italy joins the triple alliance and this is how we end up getting. The Triple Antenne and the Triple Alliance instead of the Concert of Europe. And by the way, the Triple Alliance, does anybody know what will it be called during World War One? It's not the Allies, Ethan.
The Central Powers?
Central Powers, because they're in the middle of Europe. So make a note on this slide, Triple Alliance will later become. The Central Powers, Triple Antenne will later become the Allies. Okay, so just keep that in mind. Um, so that is kind of a quick nutshell version of a lot of complicated European history. Yes, Faith, go ahead.
So with all of these different powers allying themselves despite the kind of temporary peace that was made earlier, I feel like. Allying themselves out of paranoia would have just caused tensions to rise again. It's like you're getting ready for a fight.
You're exactly, you're exactly right. Like when historians try to like figure out what caused World War One, this is one of the things they look at is the alliance system. It's like.
And then was it the Archduke Franz Ferdinand, he got, it was kind of like a chain reaction, that bomb blew up and that caused all of the.
Right.
Bombs around it to go off as well.
Yeah, and it's Serbia. Serbia is the little, um, you know, kind of like, because they're, they're like Little Brother Slav. To Big Brother Slav Russia. And so they're like the little catalyst. And so when Austria-Hungary, we're going to get to this. Gobbles up a piece of territory, which Serbia really, really wanted to unite with them because it was brother Slavs, it was Bosnia. Um, and they have their arch, the Archduke goes to tour the capital of Bosnia, Sarajevo. That's when he gets assassinated and um, Russia is going, like Austria-Hungary issues an ultimatum to Serbia. And then Serbia is like, oh my gosh, we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to basically bow down because they have such a big army compared to ours. But then Russia is like, hey, we got your back. And that's when the whole alliance system kicks in. So um, yes, you, you are, you are one hundred percent anticipating what is, what is to come here. Brayden, what were you going to ask?
Uh, yeah, so America just negotiated like a bunch of peace over here. They're like, hey, you're good now, right? So what are, like, what are, what are they thinking with all this, the, these alliances coming up? Being like, hey, we're probably going to go to war pretty soon.
Well, I mean, like everybody, like Bismarck was the smart guy, right? Like Bismarck is like, hey, concert of Europe is the way to go. Like, you know, we don't want a big war between the big powers, but France and Britain were really, really worried about losing their empires. That was why they had kind of created the Antenne Corgeaux in the first place. And then of course, added Russia to it to make it so Germany would have to split its army. So, yeah, you're right. Like, it does make it more likely to go, that they're going to go to war, but you know, we do this too. You know, the United States did this during the Cold War. We're going to talk about this when we talk about NATO and Warsaw Pact. Um, sometimes in order to scare the other side into not fighting with you. You have to create this really powerful alliance that is like so scary that they'll back off. So it's, it's, it's like, it's a concept called deterrence. Like, it's, the war will be so awful if you start it, that we're going to try to scare you into just never starting it. Uh, by having this really powerful alliance. So it's kind of an opposite way of trying to maintain peace, but it's really risky. Because if somebody in the alliance gets attacked, everybody else in the alliance is treaty obligated. To come and basically back them up, which dragged a whole bunch of countries that had nothing to do with this little conflict going on down here. Between Austria-Hungary and Serbia into a giant war. Um, so excellent, excellent questions. Uh, Ethan, what were you going to say?
Also, wasn't it like the cab driver for Franz Ferdinand, he like?
Let's, let's, let's hold on that because yes, you are right. And I know you know, um, the details on a lot of these stories really well. Um. So just hold on that, because when we get to that slide, we'll go into the details. Um, but yes, you are one hundred percent right on the money. So um, uh, the Schlieffen Plan is dusted off now. Um. We have super smart people who get paid by these think tanks and by the Pentagon. To basically play war games all the time. Like, that's all they do. Like, for those of you who, I don't know, maybe are addicted to games like Risk. You know, and, and others where you've sat and you've played for like eight hours straight, you know, in this kind of, you know. Attempt at world domination against other powers, uh, or Axis and Allies, um, great strategy games, love, you know, playing those kind of games. Um, I, I don't know if anybody else in the class is, is addicted to those as well. Uh, in the age of computers, I guess it's not as big of a thing as it, as it once was. Um, but um, basically. There are people who just get paid to do that all the time. That's all they ever do. And when someone is in a, in a, in a tough spot and they come up with a really clever plan. And they like, they just outthink everybody and they come up with a brilliant strategy. At the end of that game, people would be like. That one, we're going to write down. And so they do a big report on it, they stick it in, um, like, you know, a binder and it goes up on a shelf. And then if, if the country ever ends up in a situation like that, they can pull that strategy off the shelf and they can open it up. They can dust it off, you know, and they can say, this is a great plan. Let's do this, okay? So Ethan, what were you going to say?
Oh, uh, I think the more modern equivalent to what you're thinking of Risk is some game like Iron Hearts Four, which goes like into massive detail.
Okay, yeah.
Like.
Cause I remember playing games like Risk with my friends and just like, it would go on for like an entire day, like or.
Oh, there's like week-long campaigns in Iron Hearts Four.
Yeah, and and it's just, it was, be so much fun because you're trying to dominate the rest of the world and everybody's got their armies and they're all like into it and it's like.
Stupid, the stupid part of Iron Hearts Four is you can name your own country.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I know, like in the age of computers, board games are just not like, is like what they were. But um, yeah, so anyway, um, there, Germany had been doing this. And this is like, we're going back to the eighteen nineties, to eighteen ninety-five. When um, the nightmare scenario uh, that Bismarck never wanted to happen. Um, was, was being kind of gamed out by the, by some top, you know, German military minds. And a guy named Alfred von Schlieffen, who um, had been playing Germany in this, in this war game. Came up with a plan called the Schlieffen Plan, which was so clever and so good. That they had like written it down and they had put it up on a shelf. And they're like, you know, if we ever get into war with France on one side and Germany on the other, I'm sorry, and Russia on the other. And we have to split our army and face both of them at the same time. This is like the coolest plan because it worked in the game. It was so good. All right, so essentially this is how this works. Okay, so I'm gonna roll through this. Uh, just, you know, try to follow the steps here. Um, so. Here's how, how Schlieffen basically decided to kind of win, you know, in a war where Germany would have to split their army. And face two big armies at the same time. Russia is really outdated in their military and slow to mobilize, slow to get armies to the front, et cetera. So he was going to, this is all about speed. He was gonna take advantage of Russia's slowness by just putting some armies on the border. Now granted, once Russia brings its full weight to bear, they have a lot of guys, okay? So, you know, just putting some armies on the border isn't gonna be enough um, later. But this is all about speed. So he's like, okay, I'm gonna put armies on the border here. And then we, we have armies on the border down here, so does France, we're both ready. But Belgium is a neutral country that is friendly to France. France is not gonna put armies on the border with a friendly neutral. So what we do is we launch an attack on France, okay? We launch all of our forces kind of down here along the border. So the French army engages our forces. But in the meantime, we have a main force, which is gonna basically just say to the Belgians, don't be suicidal. If you just let us march through your country, we will do nothing to your country. Just, just don't be suicidal. So in the game, the person playing Belgium was like, okay. I, I mean, obviously, the, the German military juggernaut, I do not wanna face it, I'm a tiny country. So yes, you can go through my country. And so they just go right through Belgium. And what Schlieffen said was, let the last man in the last column, let his sleeve brush the channel. Which meant that they wanted to get to the English Channel before Britain could drop an army in their way and foil the whole thing. Okay, cause Britain would be the only one that could save France at this point, because France's armies are all down here on the border engaged with Germany's armies. So they're basically trying to get up to the Channel to keep Britain from getting involved. And then hook around and take Paris before France can get its armies back from the front to save Paris. And so it's actually a brilliant plan, like, and it worked like a charm. So in this war, that war game that, that Schlieffen played, he took France out. He just took France out, he took their capital, took them out. They were done. Then he was able to take the full weight of the German military and move it over and fight Russia. And and fight Russia much more successfully because they had all of their guys uh, going against a very large Russian force. So Ethan, I see your hand, go ahead.
I feel like I've heard this plan twice in fact.
Uh, yeah, cause like in uh, World War Two, uh, they will take France out like right away, but it's a little different. Uh, but so I'm just.
I think though, at this time, France is a bit more militarily on, you know, at, with the current situation.
You're talking about at this, this.
World War One, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, right. Uh, they're more on par, yeah. But um, eh, but the reason we're talking about this is because it's actually gonna get used, okay? So um, when the alliances all just go to war. Like Germany is just gonna go Schlieffen Plan. And and remember, the Schlieffen Plan is just, is all based on speed. So when we get to the start of World War One, this is how that happens. Uh, Dylan, go ahead, what was your, your um, question?
So it sounds like they had this plan set aside long before they could actually use it. Whereas, um, was there any risk of the plan getting out and not, them not being able to use it?
I mean, it's like, it's like any top secret, you know, military uh, stuff, like even nowadays, it's like, you know. Um, do we worry that much about like top secret plans that the Pentagon has for like a potential war with China getting out? Not really, because like there's such severe penalties for sharing, you know, top uh, secret information. So um, it's a good question actually, but uh, actually, it's, you know, it, 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 this is a, this is a top secret plan at the time, okay? So just so you know, this is, this is what Germany's plan is going to be. Uh, but somebody's going to screw it up, okay? So just, just saying, um, because otherwise World War One would have turned out much, much differently. Um, all right, so back to American politics and um. This, this is where things really get kind of interesting politically, okay? So. We get to the campaign of nineteen oh eight and uh, Taft is uh, a protege of Roosevelt. So William Howard Taft is Teddy Roosevelt's Secretary of War. And he's like this big three hundred some odd pound guy, kind of, you know, he's very portly, very, very overweight guy. But um, just kind of comes around and he's like Mr. Yes Man to Roosevelt. He's like, yes sir, yes sir, oh, that is a great idea. You know, I thought of that, you know, like, you know, and but, but you thought of it first, you know? And so what he's really, really good at is kissing up to Roosevelt. And like throughout all of the stuff that we talked about with, you know, the um, the gentleman's agreement, the Great White Fleet. The, the Russo Japanese War, the, the Moroccan Crisis, uh, Taft had been there. And he had been like, you know, kind of implementing Roosevelt's policies and in complimenting Roosevelt up one side and down the other, for how clever he was, blah, blah, blah. So the, the Republican Party bosses were like, uh, you said in nineteen oh four to Roosevelt. Um, you were not gonna run again. You were, you, you said that you only wanted one more term. So are you a man of your word or aren't you? Are you, are you gonna keep your promise? Or are you gonna be another typical politician who never keeps their promises? And so Roosevelt was like, I am gonna keep my word. Because my protege, William Howard Taft, is gonna carry on the, the legacy of my. You know, what, all the plans I've set in motion, he understands all of it. He knows my mind and he will continue my policies. While I go off on an African safari and kill lions, you know, so. So Roosevelt was basically gonna take like a, a, a little vacation for a while, but he, he was not intending to be quote unquote, done with politics. So um, Taft is his protege. Now, the guy who had twice lost to McKinley saw his opportunity. Because he knew that going up against Roosevelt is like political suicide, there's no way. Uh, but Taft, he had a chance against. So William Jennings Bryan, now, you know, with gray hair and now kind of like, you know, still in charge of the Democratic Party. But, but really struggling to find, you know, some traction against Roosevelt. Because Roosevelt had kind of stolen the progressive mantle with his trust busting and whatnot. He basically tried to out-progressive Roosevelt. And in this campaign where he is like going from place to place, making speech after speech, getting the crowds wild, riled up. Um, he says, and this is, this is where he basically sticks his foot in the mouth, in his mouth and really kind of screws himself up. He says, and I believe that the government should own the railroads. Now, what is that? Like he's gone, like, I mean, when you're trying to go progressive, you're, you're, you're pushing the envelope here. You're trying to go kind of against the capitalist system a little bit, but what has he done essentially? Ethan, go ahead.
He brought up that terrible, terrible O word back again that is socialism.
Socialism, yes. So like people are like, that's socialism, that's socialism, this guy, we knew it. Like, so remember how they tried to paint him as a socialist with their advertising campaigns when McKinley was like the front porch candidate? Well, now, they actually have proof that he is because they're like, look. You know, so essentially this is Taft riding on the coattails of Roosevelt's popularity. Um, because Roosevelt is gonna go out and campaign for him, uh, versus um, Bryan. Who is still trying to kind of, you know, recapture that populist vibe and bring it back into the Democratic Party. But he went a little too far when he called for government ownership of railroads and telegraphs too, by the way, which I forgot to mention. So um, that is campaign of nineteen oh eight. And in the election of nineteen oh eight, you can see that a couple of those Western states, yes, Nick, go ahead.
I was gonna say, why, just like, why would he say that he just wanted, like, what was the benefit of, I guess, owning the railroad? Just like, cause that's an obvious blunder from like big business and all that, like that's just an immediate turn off from anyone that would ever want to support him in those areas. Like, why would he say that?
Because that's what farmers wanna hear. Farmers wanna hear that someone fair, who's not gonna price gouge them, who's not gonna try to like, you know. Profit off of them, uh, is going to like own the railroads. So um, essentially, he's trying to get those populists out west to come back to the Democratic Party. And in order to do that, he's got to out-progressive Roosevelt. And that's hard to do because Roosevelt had really kind of created this image where he was on the side of the people and and Taft was benefiting from that. And so um, yeah, i- it's a blunder. Like he said it and then afterwards he was like, oh god, what did I just say? So um, yeah, like he's just, he's trying really, really hard to get to the left of Roosevelt. On, on this, one of the topics that really, really riles up the farmers of the West. And he just made a mistake. Like that was, like, if he had thought about it earlier, he would have been like, no, that's not a smart thing to say. But in the middle of a speech, he says it, and then they're like, proof, proof, you know, go ahead, Kenzie, what were you gonna ask?
So besides the comment he made that ultimately ruined him, was there anything else that they had had on each other?
Uh, just honestly, um, like, William Jennings Bryan just never really had the political instincts. That, that smarter, more droid politicians like uh, like Roosevelt did. And so he, he held on to things, you know, that had once been a real, like, like, you know, the gold standard thing back in the election that he lost against McKinley the second time. He held on to things that just didn't um, really have the political weight that they once did. So um, I guess, you know, like, are there any other issues in this campaign besides that? Um, really, I mean, you know, people, the progressive movement is, is at its like height right now. Like, people want the government to step in and and control the corporations. And Roosevelt had busted up the trusts and and he was incredibly popular. So if Taft was gonna continue to do what Roosevelt wanted, it really didn't leave a lot of issues for the Democrats to attack them on. Of course, they could go with race and stuff like that, but it really didn't resonate with enough voters to make a big difference. Um, I saw two hands there, I see, actually, I see three now. Um, and I think Elizabeth was first, so Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, so did Taft really have any of his own appeal to voters, other than he was essentially Roosevelt too?
No, one of the um, one of the, the, the political wags from the time, uh, you know, like the, you know, people who made their living talking about politics. Said Taft stands for Take Advice From Theodore, okay? So T A F T, Take Advice From Theodore. So you know, his, his political image was like based solely on like being the, the, the guy who would do what Roosevelt did. While Roosevelt goes off and does some, some manly stuff like hunting in a safari in Africa, you know, it's the kind of thing, so. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say?
Um, do you think Brian might have even stood a chance if he didn't like blunder like that?
Ah, yeah, but it's so hard to recapture like a group of people once they've shifted over. Once, once a party like kind of builds a coalition, it's really hard to get them to come back. And so Brian was having a difficult time trying to figure out, how do I get all those people who are believers in reform? And and really the heart of what he was after, when he was going against McKinley, how do I get them to come back after what Roosevelt has done? And he's, he's like stolen our thunder, he's, he's gotten all those people. So it was a, like, it was, he was in a pickle anyway. Like, how do you get them to come back to you is, is, is the question? And honestly, I don't know if he really could have figured out a way to do it. Um, because at this time Roosevelt had such an amazing reputation. Maybe if he like showed how Roosevelt wouldn't do certain things like in child labor, et cetera. Um, maybe that would be enough, but still, a- again, it would, it would be the more educated elite classes that would, would like. Respond to that, so I still think that um, that Taft and Roosevelt have a huge advantage. Even if William Jennings Bryan didn't shoot himself in the foot by, uh, you know, giving them quote unquote, proof that he was a socialist. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Oh, uh, I gotta go in a minute, uh, I have to. I can listen to the rest of the video over the weekend.
Just right, yeah. So I mean, since you're one of the people taking the AP, just make sure you get the, the info in your head, cause you, you'll need it. Um, but yeah, okay, see you later. Um, all right, so um, that brings into office our twenty-seventh president, William Howard Taft. Who is an interesting character. Um, so like we mentioned earlier, Taft had Roosevelt completely convinced that he understood. Like he, like, in terms of being an adroit politician, he totally understood Roosevelt. Like he was like, I am in the zone with you, you and I are of the same mind, but really, that wasn't true. Like he's not as clever as Roosevelt, he doesn't know how to respond. And he's just gonna bungle everything, okay? So we're gonna talk about this um, in just a second. Uh, but yeah, he, he, he doesn't know how to quote unquote, play both sides, kind of maintain your spot on the fence, so to speak. Um, and so, when it came to trust busting, he just continued to bust up trusts. Without really considering which trusts are the good trusts and which trusts are the bad ones. And so JP Morgan's uh, trust uh, comes under fire and um, with government lawsuits. And Ta- and Roosevelt, who's off on a safari when he hears about this, is like, weren't you paying attention when, when we talked about this? Like, what, what, what are you doing? You're screwing everything up. And then um, the conservation movement gets turned against uh, the Republicans. When uh, there's like an internal squabble between the, the guy who heads up the Department of the Interior, Richard Ballinger. And the guy who's the head of the, the forestry department, uh, Gifford Pinchot. Gifford Pinchot was like a hero to most of the uh, the conservationists. And so um, uh, Ballinger and he get into a little spat and then Ballinger fires Pinchot. And Taft is like, well, yeah, Ballinger's your boss, so you're fired, yeah. And 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 that's when Roosevelt just loses his mind and he's like. Don't you understand how important Pinchot is to keep the con- conservation movement in with us? And so like, at this point, he's like, I, I, now I see that you just, you just were um, a. A, a, a kisser upper, you didn't really understand anything, did you? I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna take the nomination back next time around. And so Roosevelt and Taft have a complete break at this point. I see some hands here. Uh, Olivia, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Um, would you say that that was just him cracking under pressure? Was that just him not thinking through his decisions at all?
He's, he's, he's just not as clever as Roosevelt. Like when it comes to like a situation and you know, Rose, how Roosevelt would be clever and he would play both sides. Taft is just kind of like, duh, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't really get it. Like he had been like, yes boss, yes boss, yes boss, but he never really understood it. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say? I see your hand, did you just forget to put it down or?
I just forgot again.
Oh, okay, no problem. All right, so um, basically, the big business wing of the party, which has been out of power. Ever since Roosevelt had, had come in, they see their opportunity. And they come in and they say to Taft, you wanna, you wanna run again, don't you? You wanna be president again, don't you? And they're like. And they're like, hey, we have this thing called an advertising campaign that worked really well with a guy named McKinley. We can do that for you too cuz we don't want Roosevelt coming back, so we'll be your new best friends. And so Taft, who started out as this pro-progressive Roosevelt person, ends up becoming a tool of the pro- the the pro-business wing of the party. Like, he, he just basically is like, you know, okay, um, I guess I'll do what you say. And um, he signs this unbelievable tariff, like, which raises tariffs to to new heights and has all of this like extra stuff in it that is benefits, you know, the pro-business wing of the party. And um, he signs it in the law and says, that's the best tariff I've ever signed, it's the best law I've ever signed, trying to make it sound good to the American people. And that progressive senator from Wisconsin that we talked about, Bob LaFolli, uh, uh, he reads it and he's like, I can't believe, look at all the stuff in here, you know, and he, he, he kind of gets into the newspapers, talking about all of the things that were in the bill. And so the progressive wing of the Republican Party is now turned against Taft. So we have a very interesting situation coming up as we get into the next election as to how this is all gonna play out. Because the various coalitions that had supported both parties were now kind of in flux. Uh, because the big business wing is kind of come back in and become Taft's new friend. And Roosevelt has promised that he's gonna come back and try to take the nomination away from Taft. So there is civil war inside the Republican Party right now. Now, um, the, the big business interests are like, look, Roosevelt's big stick diplomacy is risky because it it basically potentially involves us in wars. And there's a better way for uh you to influence Latin American countries without having to invade as much. So just remember that invasion still happen, just not as much. Um, and and that is with American business interests. So with your blessing, we would like, and this is all under um, uh, his Secretary of State Philander C. Knox, who is a big pro-business person, um, we would like to um put American businesses in Latin American countries, put branches in there, get them addicted to our businesses. And then if they are, if they dare to not do what we want, we pull our business out of that Latin American country and we like basically say, okay, you no longer get the benefits of American factories, you know, and American business. And um, and then suddenly their economy will tank and then they'll do what we want, you know? And so um, that was our new way of getting Latin American countries uh to basically do what we wanted, which was to get them addicted to American business interests. And then if they didn't do what we wanted, just to jerk the rug out from under them and pull our business interest out real quick and cause their economy to crash. Um, and so um, is also, uh, yeah, go ahead, Autumn.
Did anybody in Europe see that this was happening and oppose it or do anything about it?
I mean, they're all exploiting people all over the world too, like, they own colonies, like, they own the rest of the world. So like, the kind of stuff that we're doing is mild compared to what they're doing. Like, you're, you're saying like, kind of like, oppose it on humanitarian grounds, right? We're like, this is wrong, you know, like, you shouldn't do this kind of thing, right? Um, they're far worse than we are, like, at this point in history, it's all like whoever's strong, just take what they want, kind of thing. And it, so um, that's an excellent question, it would definitely apply nowadays, it's just that back at this time, everybody's like, just, there isn't a lot of concern about human rights, et cetera. Um, so uh, that also, dollar diplomacy really, uh, because really what big business wanted was to get into China. Um, this really was used in the Far East, uh, so um, American railroad companies began building railroads in China. Um, and um, Henry Cabot Lodge, um, uh, who was a government official, uh, blocked a Japanese plan to buy the Baja Peninsula, which if you look at the um, uh, kind of the, the map of Mexico on the western side over where California is, there's that big long peninsula that kind of sticks down into the Pacific Ocean, that's called the Baja Peninsula. And uh, Japan was actually gonna try to buy that piece of land from Mexico. And um, uh, with the uh backing of American business interests, uh, uh, Henry Cabot Lodge, one of our ambassadors was able to block that. Um, and the lodge corollary to the Monroe Doctrine, which is kind of similar to the uh, to the Roosevelt corollary is um, non-European countries um need, like Japan, they don't get to have colonies on this side of the world. Like, so you know how the Monroe Doctrine said Europeans stay out? Well, the lodge corollary says Asians and other people who are not European stay out also. United States, this is our backyard, don't, don't, don't get involved. But that would have been interesting if uh Japan had actually pulled that off and had gotten control of the Baja Peninsula. Alright, so like we mentioned, um, uh, there was this big break uh between um Taft and um Gifford Pinchot, who was uh the um, the, the, the chief of the forestry. Um, and so, and it had to do with uh Richard Ballinger, uh, basically um kind of being uh a, a pro-business Secretary of the Interior. And um, their Ballinger basically was obstructing an investigation into coal claims uh, uh purchases led by Louis Glavas of the General Land Office in Ohio. And then Glavas basically accused him of a conflict of interest, which was improper, and um took his concerns to the press with the help of one of his subordinates, the chief of the forestry division, Gifford Pinchot. And that's what causes the rift between Pinchot and Ballinger. And so um, and Gifford Pinchot had been a close personal friend of Theodore Roosevelt and had previously been kind of untouchable politically. But Ballinger basically fires him and then Taft backs Ballinger. And that's when Roosevelt and Taft have their big falling out and Roosevelt says, I will come back and I will take the nomination away from you. Alright, and so that takes us to bringing down Boss Cannon, which actually, uh, somebody has this slide.
That's my slide.
Alright, Max, so are you ready for this? Max? Max, are you ready for this or do you want me to do it? Alright, Max, you may be have your mic microphone muted right now, but um if you don't um take this slide, we can always just have you pick a different one. Um, so if you're not ready, that's fine, we'll just, you know, you can, you can pick a different side. Um, but uh, if you speak up, like, if you interrupt me, then I'll, then I'll stop, but otherwise, I'll just go ahead and and do this one. So um, one of the ways in which the pro-business wing of the Republican Party was able to kind of get what it wanted was because the Speaker of the House.
Hey, Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Max just told me that his audio isn't working as soon as he unmuted himself, so just give him a second.
Okay, alright, well, I will, I will intro this while he is working on getting his, his uh, uh, um, his audio up, but thank you, uh, Brady, for for making mention of that. Um, so, one of the, the ways in which the, the pro-business wing of the party had been able to like maintain its kind of control over things, especially when it came to government spending, was they had a pro-business Republican as the Speaker of the House. Um, they, they called this guy Boss Cannon, um, alright, I see Max getting admitted here. And um, at the time, the Speaker had way more power than uh, than the Speaker does currently. Uh, so the, the Speaker had the power to like basically say when bills were gonna get debated. Uh, Max, are you, are you able to speak now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As soon as I unmuted, everything went away, so.
No problem, um, so I, I basically just introed it, uh, I just kind of said, you know, Boss Cannon, very powerful uh figure, who's part of the pro-business wing of the party. And he had a lot more power back then because um, the Speaker had more power uh than they do currently. So I'll let you pick up from there, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, so Boss Cannon, as has been said, he's this big pro-business Republican Party Speaker of the House. And back then, importantly, the Speaker of the House was also the uh head of the Rules Committee. And so Boss Cannon, as head of the Rules Committee, could pick and choose his own committee chairs and committee members. And that essentially meant that if you were Speaker of the House, you could control any debate happening on the House floor. You could control the amount of time they, they were debating something or whether something went through at all. So he used this essentially just to shut down any like progressive bill that ever tried to go through the House.
So, so essentially, he could kill a bill by basically just limiting debate, limiting amendments.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, obviously, having everyone's bills killed makes the progressive side of the Democratic and the Republican Party mad. So, one night, March seventeenth, uh, it was a holiday, so I don't remember the holiday, but.
St. Patrick's Day, I think it's.
St. Patrick's Day, yeah, St. Patrick's Day. About half of the Senate, or not Senate, half of the uh House was there, there were so few of them. So this one uh House member, what was his name?
George Norris, Representative George.
Yeah, George Norris. George Norris really hates Boss Cannon, he hates him a lot because all of his bills get shut down. So Norris just leads this like revolt against Joseph Cannon for twenty nine hours. And he just, he just gets like the entire Democratic side of the House and about, it was like forty nine Republicans, two, forty two, excuse me, to go against Boss Cannon. And so for twenty nine hours, they started debating the powers of the Speaker of the House, his role as the Chair of the Rules Committee. And at the end of it, they managed to actually strip him of like almost all of the Speaker of the House's powers, it's very limited effort. But surprisingly, that doesn't quit, that doesn't convince Joseph Cannon to quit. He stays as Speaker of the House cuz he's like, ah, it's weak to quit at this point, so he just stays there.
Oh, you're talking, but I, there's.
A bum, it is just, you know?
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, you were talking, but then it's like cut out for a second, but you know, you said, ah, it's, it's weak to quit at this point, and then we, and then we lost you, what were you saying?
Yeah, so he just stays in the, in the House, like eternally spiting the rest of the, the members of the representatives. And, I mean, eventually, but he has no power at this point. So uh, now at this point, the Rules, Rules Chair Committee is chosen and then they choose people. And instead of having five members of the committee, there's fifteen and it's like representative from each state. So now, that like really limits the power of the Speaker of the House, it really stops one side from just overthrowing everyone else.
Yeah, when you guys take government next year, you learn about the inner workings of the House or Representatives and and you learn about the Rules Committee, you'll see why the Rules Committee has so much power now. Now, the Speaker does have some power, the Speaker still is kind of like a leader of the party and they get to appoint co- uh committee chairs for a lot of the committees at the very beginning, so they, they can kind of exert power through those committee chairs. But um, yeah, it really reduces the uh power of the Speaker of the House. Uh, and so this is a progressive revolt against um, a pro-business conservative Republican. Uh, Scott, did you have a question for Max?
Yeah, it seemed like a bunch of people hated this dude, how'd he get the position in the first place?
Max, you wanna answer that?
So he got the position because of what he was doing, like, not because of what he was doing, he wasn't doing yet. But he was this very strong Republican figure, very pro-business. So the pro-business wing of the Republican Party really likes him, and he gets put into Speaker of the House position. And it goes down from there because he's so strongly like that, he's just iron-fisted with that. That it does actually just make the progressives of the Republican Party, the more moderates, they get mad at him too. And so slowly and slowly, he loses a lot of his base that's holding him up.
Yeah, I mean, that, the, the, you'll see as we get to the next election, that the pro-business wing of the party still has a lot of power to manipulate the party machinery. So without some like amazing political figure with an incredible amount of star power, like Teddy Roosevelt, um, they do have a lot of like just power over kind of like the, the political machines and the, and the, you know, which are slowly losing their influence due to the progressives and whatnot, but they still have some power. Um, that whole side of the party, that, that whole side of party politics. So he's kind of a holdover from the days when the pro-business wing had like all this power and and then they lost it when Roosevelt got it, but go ahead, um, is there anything else, Max, that you wanted to add?
Not really.
Okay, great, yeah, I did, good job. Um, so that is the, kind of the, the downfall of Boss Cannon. Um, as part of this struggle between the progressives and and the pro-business interests uh in politics. And we have some interesting um developments that occurred during the Taft administration, uh, including two amendments to the Constitution. Um, which are basically like, kind of like, when the Republicans, when the pro-business Republicans got control away from Grover Cleveland, when the Harrison administration, you know, they tried to like steal the other side's thunder by like sticking things in there, like the Sherman Antitrust Act, the Sherman Silver Purchase Act, which basically said they kind of pretended to, to give the other side what they wanted, but then, you know, didn't really. So they were kind of hoping to do the same sort of thing when um, the, you know, cuz there's a lot of progressive pressure to get a uh, an amendment added to the Constitution to, to put an income tax in. And progressives wanted the income tax to be mostly on the rich, okay? So like, uh, it would be a progressive income tax. And uh, they're like, it'll never make it through the state legislature. So Congress actually passes the Sixteenth Amendment through the um, through Congress. You have to have two thirds in both houses because people were worried about getting reelected and they wanted to be on the record as supporting it. And they think, oh, it'll, the state legislatures will never ratify this. But voters uh through the progressive movement really kind of being at like almost the zenith of its power, um, are put so much pressure on state legislatures, even though many of them are, you know, influenced heavily by big business, that um, state legislatures, enough of them actually ratify it, that it becomes part of the Constitution. So the reason that we have the IRS and income taxes and all that's is because the progressive movement was looking for ways to pay for all of the programs that they wanted. And the only other income that the, the government had, the tariff, wasn't something that they wanted to raise really high. Plus, it just didn't bring in enough money, so this is where the income tax becomes a thing. And then uh, the Seventeenth Amendment, um, really, same sort of story. Um, you know, uh, it was proposed by a progressive Senator, Joseph Bristow, um, which, and it would basically change the way that senators were selected, senators used to be selected because they were um, uh, you know, basically just like the person that the state legislature wanted. Uh, and that was very corrupt because pro- the businesses were like influencing state legislatures in their elections and then, of course, they would get their person into the Senate. So it made it so, uh, they would be directly elected. This is like right off of the Omaha platform, this is like something right out of, you know, the populist movement, the progressive movement. And um, again, uh, the, the Republicans thinking that it wouldn't make it through all of the state legislatures, you know, that they had calculated it out. Um, they passed it through Congress and then to their surprise, it did make it through the state legislature. So it just shows the grassroots power of the progressive movement, which really is, is, is fighting back against these pro-business interests which now have control of the White House. Um, now, uh, we talked about the Elkins Act back when we talked about the Square Deal back in nineteen oh three. Um, but Senator Elkins, um, of West Virginia and Representative Robert Mann proposed um, a new act, that the Mann-Elkins Act of nineteen ten, which would further tighten control for the Interstate Commerce Commission over illegal price gouging by railroads. Cuz railroads were still trying to, you know, take advantage of their geographic monopolies and in price gouge. And so um, this was gonna add some more teeth to the Elkins, you know, the previous Elkins Act. And um, a special amendment was actually added to this bill, which would create a special court to oversee cases um, against the trust called the US Commerce Court. Uh, but this court, of course, you know, is gonna run into trouble because of pro-business interests not wanting it to exist. Uh, cuz it was seen as basically kind of infringing upon the territory that belonged to the other courts. And so um, uh, and there was a joint resolution. And there was a joint resolution that passed both Houses of Congress where they were able to disband the court. Uh, but one of the judges on the court, uh, Robert Archibald, um, if he's the one, he's the reason why the court really, there's enough political. Kind of oomph to get hit, to get the court disbanded is because he basically, they they were investigating him and found out that he. Had been soliciting and taking bribes from the railroads and the coal mines um uh workers, actually from the workers who were bribing him. Rather than the actual businesses. And so Congress basically was convinced to shut down this special commerce court in nineteen thirteen. But the Mann Elkins Act is another attempt by progressives to really crack down on big business, especially the railroads. Uh, the Representative Mann becomes very um uh quite famous actually for another act which bears his name.
My slide.
Ah, okay, so uh Brayden, uh, I will let you take over. So go ahead.
All right, so I'm I'm sure that the first thing that pops out to you is the phrase white slavery. So white slavery is a phenomenon in which young white girls are either kidnapped or tricked and forced to work in brothels. Which is basically a little house filled with prostitutes and people come in and, you know. Do their business.
Yeah. Of the of the of the of the prostitution.
Yeah, yeah. So the uh, the Mann Act was made to counteract this thing. That was really rampant throughout uh the US at this time. And so it made it a felony to engage in interstate or foreign commerce transport of any woman or girl. For immoral purposes. And so the the freezing immoral purposes. Is kind, it's it's very vague. So it's um, they they use this in a lot of situations. That weren't really targeted towards uh. Like the sex trafficking stuff that it was originally meant for. So while it while it seems like a really good act, like it seems like something that's like, hey, this is really great. You know, they're stopping sex trafficking, but it's it's used to prosecute men that are having. They're having sex with underage females, but which is which is the good thing. But it's also used to target premarital sex, extramarital sex and interracial relationships.
Yes, and we're going to get to a boxer, a famous boxer who gets famously jailed under the Mann Act, which so we'll save that. I don't know if you have anything on Jack Johnson, but if you do, just hold on to it because we'll get to that when we get to his story. But um. Yeah, that is the Mann Act. Do you have anything on the the story of how it kind of like becomes this this political cause? When Miss Mona Marshall drops a note outside her window in the Everly House in Chicago?
Yeah, so all I have is that uh just Miss Mona Marshall was, you know, one of the women caught up in all this. And uh, one night she dropped a note from the where she was working in and it said. It was it was a note that said something like, I am a white slave. And then I believe she wrote about all of the stuff afterwards to kind of spread awareness about it.
Gave an interview and like the interview became like a like a newspaper article and and yeah.
Yeah. So she she helps spread a lot of awareness about it as well as. You know, creating the name for it, which is white slavery.
Yeah, and really, it's the WCTU. What is the WCTU? Do you remember like? Does anybody remember what that is? Because we've talked about it before. It's part of a different movement. That's part of the progressive movement. The Women's Christian Blank Union. What does that T stand for? Uh, this is probably kind of one of those small details that's really hard to remember, but it's the Women's Christian Temperance Union. These are ladies against alcohol. So church ladies, like Sunday School ladies from all across the country. They're they're a huge part of the progressive movement because even though they don't have the right to vote. They pressure their husbands. They like, you know, they have ways of getting their husbands to kind of vote the way they want them to on certain issues. Uh, and so this becomes a cause celebrate among the ladies of the WCTU, just showing how powerful that grassroots organization is. It's Sunday School ladies from across the country who are scandalized by what is happening to these poor girls. And they want something done. Something must be done. Okay, so the Mann Act is passed in response to all of this public pressure. Uh, very good, Brayden. Uh, good job. And that takes us to. Jack Johnson. Okay, so. What if I were to ask you, who is the first black athlete to break the color line in a major sport? Most of you would say Jackie Robinson, but really, it's actually this guy. Uh, and the major sport at the time was seen as actually the most the most manly sport in the world. Uh, even more manly than football and some of the other sports that are kind of slowly gaining traction as time goes by. And that is boxing. Okay, so Jack Johnson um is uh a boxer. Who basically becomes the heavyweight champion of the world by beating Tommy Burns in nineteen oh eight. And this is like in like an insult to the idea that white men are better than black men, which was like very prevalent at the time. People were like held on to that, like as as like, you know, a reason why racism is 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 okay, etc. And so um at first, the way that that whites tried to get Jack Johnson was by just trying to find somebody who. Who could beat him and take away his title. Um, so uh they they basically tried to bring people like. In which who would be so amazing, so good that they could beat him. And they called these people Great White Hopes. Uh, the probably the most significant of the Great White Hopes was a former heavyweight champion named Jim Jeffries that they coaxed out of. Out of retirement. Um, and uh, the the fight between Jack Johnson, who had become like a hero. To to black people all across the South and everywhere because they were just loving the fact that he was sticking it to white people, so to speak. Uh, and Jim Jeffries, the Great White Hope, who was going to supposedly beat him, uh, was billed as the fight of the century. And when um Jeffries was beaten. By Johnson, there were race riots in cities across the country. So this this has some 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 racial history that. You know, kind of along the lines of what we've been talking about earlier that goes with it. And um. Johnson just keeps flaunting his his winning kind of uh in the face of of white America. And he liked to um uh basically have. Girls on both arms, you know, kind of walking around as a player, as a man, so to speak. And oftentimes they would be white girls. So of the the image of a black man dressed in like the finest, you know. Uh, coats, etc., with a white woman on each arm just enraged people uh who were white. Yes, Brady.
So it was obviously like a big thing, or at least a Jack Johnson for him to be dating white women, but was it like super looked down upon for the white women to be dating him?
Oh, sure. Yeah, sure. Uh, and 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 this is all part of kind of this nightlife scene that is developing. So. Um, we're going to talk about this when we get to the nineteen twenties, but there um, there's going to be a new phenomenon where there's like these places where people can go. And dance to jazz music. Now, really, this is kind of a thing that's still in its infancy, but um. Jack Johnson is going to start the first, one of the first big nightclubs, which is going to become. The biggest nightclub in New York City, um, uh, even into the nineteen twenties. It's called the Cotton Club. Um, so he starts that that nightclub and um, of course, you know, these ladies are are often employed by the nightclub. Uh, but are also his girlfriends. Um, so, you know, uh, Chase, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
How bad did it hurt the reputation of like boxing as a sport, especially in the South since Jack was like black?
Well, I mean, boxing is considered the most manly sport that there is. So so white Southerners especially. Wanted somebody to beat this guy. It's like if they take him out in some dirty way. Then they can't really claim that they actually beat him. So they have to have some way to stick it to him, you know, and and so he could. So he can actually be beat so they can prove that white men are stronger and better. Boyer, what were you gonna say?
Were there uh white people that like behind like openly supported him and like made money off of him? Or was it like super frowned upon to have any association with him?
Oh, no, that fight of the century made a ton of money. Like Jack Johnson's promoters, like a lot of them are white, like, you know, is so. There are people, but they're like, they don't, it's not like they're like big race, pro-race, like crusaders. They're just people who are just making money off of like Jack Johnson because he draws so much attention because he's black. So um, yeah, no, there are a lot of whites that are involved, but mostly for for monetary purposes. Brady, go ahead.
So you said that the the white man wanted to fight him fairly because they didn't want to seem like they had to do something dirty. But did they ever insinuate or make accusations that he was fighting dirty, that he was doing something to cheat?
Yeah, that was like in the newspaper articles that covered it. Yeah, like they were like, oh, yeah, the reason he won is because he fought dirty against Jeffries and da 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 da. All right, but see, but they're going to fight dirty against him. So watch what happens here. So essentially, he is going to a fight. Um, and I forget where it was. I think it might have been like Chicago or something, but he's crossing state lines. With his girls, with his white girls who come with him to these fights. And he's arrested. And uh, he's like, what are you charging me with? I haven't done anything wrong. I haven't broken the law. And they're like, yes, you did. You brought white women, white girls across state lines for immoral purposes. You violated the Mann Act. And they sentence him to a year in prison. So while he's in prison, he tries to to um kind of stay in shape. But it's difficult because they don't allow him a lot of time to like physically train and he doesn't have a lot in his cell to do it with. Um, and so for a year, they're basically looking for somebody and and they find a guy who's like six foot. I don't know. He he was huge. I think he was a really tall guy. Uh, they called him the Potawatomi Giant, Jess Willard. And um, they he's, Jess Willard is training and training and training and Jack Johnson is just not getting like a lot of, you know. Training while he's in prison. And so once he gets out of prison, he has to defend his heavyweight title. And in nineteen fifteen, uh, he is defeated by Jess Willard. So. Um, Jack Johnson breaks the color line in a major sport, but doesn't do so successfully because he's unable to kind of like maintain. His um, his spot, so to speak, uh, and 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 kind of gets taken out by 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 racist white people. Matter of fact, there's a great Ken Burns documentary, if you ever get a chance, called Unforgivable Blackness, which is um the story of Jack Johnson. Uh, but just an incredible story um from the sports world and having to do with race. All right, uh, someone asked me about this earlier. I think it was Nick a while back who asked about workplace safety. Uh, and is there ever going to be a time when the progressive movement is going to get on the feds to like promote workplace safety? And the answer is yes, and it's after this tragedy. So in the very aptly named Ash Building. Uh, in New York City, there was a um. A T-shirt manufacturing company. This 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 company manufactured undershirts that you would wear underneath your clothing. To keep the sweat stains from staining your clothing or whatever. Uh, and it was called the Triangle Shirtwaist Company. And it employed young women, mostly immigrant young women. Um, uh, and basically they were, they had sewing machines and, you know, and and they. And just they had all the stuff you have for for running textiles and and just. There was, but there was like hardly any attention paid to like safety at all. And so there was cotton dust everywhere. There's scraps of cotton everywhere. It's like, you know, if a small spark were ever. To get into any of this, it would cause a massive fire. And and so, of course, uh, on March twenty fifth. Uh, nineteen eleven at about four forty five, a s- a fire starts on the eighth floor. And so um, the girls on the eighth floor get out before the fire gets too big. And um, uh, the the. The there were people who were supposed to go and warn the the girls on the other floors. So the girls on the ninth and the tenth floor were warned. But the person who was warning them like yelled a warning in, uh, especially because they were in a hurry to get to the top floor. So they yell a warning into the ninth floor, thinking that people heard them. Uh, you know, fire, fire, get out. And then uh. But because the machines were all going and and, you know, it was so loud, they didn't hear. People on that floor didn't hear. And then they go up to the tenth floor and they warn everybody. So the girls on the eighth floor and the tenth floor get out. But the girls on the ninth floor just keep working. And this fire just engulfs the 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 eighth floor of the building. And then the girls realize something is terribly wrong and um the the smoke and the fire is spreading. And it's getting up into these upper floors. And so um, they, many of them basically go up to the roof of the building. And as the fire is engulfing the entire top of this building, these young women, many of them like late teens, early twenties. Um, uh, are are faced with a terrible choice. And the choice is burn to death. As the fire engulfs the entire top of this building or what? What's the other option besides burning to death?
Jump.
Jump, yeah, and make it quick. And so this is the same thing you saw in nine eleven where people were like, you know. Having to make that choice and they, a lot of them jumped too, uh, because it's just a quick death. Um, and so people. On the street are watching in horror as young women are hitting the pavement um and 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 dying, you know, from the impact. Um, uh, in just one after another after another. And so, of course, it makes front page news and um. It it, you know, the tragedy is 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 horrific. Hundred and forty eight young women die. Uh, and that just kind of grips the public's attention. And out of this tragedy, um, the federal government is going to be under so much pressure from the progressive movement, which is now kind of latched on to this. And and this has become their new thing that they're going to start passing workplace safety laws. And eventually. Uh, it won't be until the seventies that OSHA is created under Nixon, but um. Uh, eventually there will be a government agency where you can make complaints about workplace safety called OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Hatters Hazards Administration. Um, which if you guys work at any place, like in the break room, there'll be a big poster that says OSHA. And it gives you, it lets you know what your rights are and what you can complain about. Olivia, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering in that top right picture, um, are there people like just laying on the floor? Or what is that?
Those are, those are, this is a picture from the girls that were dropping and the ones that have hit the pavement, people have put their coats over them. So that like.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, it covers up the obviously gory scene otherwise, but this was like a front page picture from a newspaper, you know, like showing, you know, depicting what happened. Now, um, the factory owners were put on trial and um, uh, Max Blanc and Isaac Harris were seen as just villains. And everybody hated them. But when they tried to prove the case in a criminal sense, you know, that's that's a really high standard. You know, it's um, uh, beyond a reasonable doubt, which is ninety five percent certain, and they just could not prove intent. Um, so they escaped criminal charges, but they were sued and and there was a massive negligence lawsuit that was brought. And, you know, they showed evidence like the doorknobs and melted and the the fire escape was flimsy and all this stuff and. Uh, they had not provided, you know, for safety and and had been negligent. And so they won that case. And of course, that is a big motivation for. Businesses to uh get their safety under control was, you know, they didn't want to get sued because that that suit. Left a precedent, you know, like so if another workplace, you know, ended up being negligent with safety, they could get sued for lots and lots of money as well. Nathan, what were you gonna ask?
I'm not sure if he said this, but did the buildings like during this time period not have like any like fire escapes or anything?
They they did, uh, but you know, businesses were often like kind of responsible for um, making sure that there were proper safety. Uh, things like fire escapes that were added on to their areas, especially if they were running something like a factory. And um, obviously, you know, in this case, uh, that wasn't the case. The 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 fire escape that was provided was very flimsy. And, you know, the doorknobs melted under the heat and people were trapped and it was just, it was horrible all around. Like they had not prepared for this at all in any sense. So, but yes, uh, and and so work, that that is actually going to become. Part of the new legislation that uh appears at both the federal and the state level is going to be requiring um. Fire escapes and requiring them to be able to hold a certain number of people, etc. So um, excellent question. And that takes us to another terrible tragedy, um, one that has captured the pop. Um, one that has captured the po- popular imagination. And of course, ever since the movie was created in the nineteen nineties, it has been like this thing that people just can't stop talking about because of how vivid the picture is in that movie of of how, you know, horrific that story is. Olivia, go ahead.
Um, this is my slide.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna let you take over. So go ahead.
Okay, um, so at this point, based on the research that I got, um, transatlantic passenger trade was highly profitable and competitive during this time. And there was a lot of like rivals trying to get the better of each other. And um, I didn't get the names of the two men who decided to like answer the all the rivalries and like created the Titanic. Is that correct?
Um, okay, yeah. So there's the White Star Line, um, and uh, there were some rival companies that were trying to kind of corner this whole market on on these giant floating, it's almost like a giant floating palace where rich people could do all kinds of fun stuff. You know, it's like a cruise nowadays. But uh,
Yeah.
They have passenger liner with tons of extra entertainment and the tickets to it were really expensive. Um, essentially, it's like the new idea because ship technology had gotten to the point where these kind of ships were now like a viable thing. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Um, and from what I got, speed was an attention grabber mostly. And so um, these two men, I didn't get their names. Um, they decided to instead not focus on speed, but kind of like comfort, like you said, where rich people can just hang out. And basically, as it, as the Titanic was built, it featured a first class dining area, four elevators and a swimming pool. And obviously there was more to that, but that's what I got. Cause those are more like com-
It had like a ballroom with like a full
For base things.
Yeah, it it, I mean, there was like a ballroom, there was like a full, you know, like uh, dining area that had the fine music and the orchestra and all of that. Like it was, it was posh. I mean, it you know, it's it's like being at a country club almost, except it's floating. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And there are also um, safety elements included that and that included sixteen compartments that had doors which could be closed and trapped water. Um, if what, even if it was breached, yeah.
So what Olivia is pointing out is is on this bottom picture here. And so they called this ship unsinkable. Because they're like, if there's ever a puncture in one of like in the hole, like a water, like a hole below the waterline. We have these compartments that can be sealed off. So the water would just be fill up that one little compartment and the rest of the ship would be fine. But that actually turns out to be the reason why it sinks and and why it sinks in the way it does. So I'll, I'll let you tell the story. I won't. I won't try to jump into my, sorry.
Yeah, and I put um, this down after it. I'm not sure if it's correct or not, because it kind of confused me. But I said, it was reported that the bulkheads weren't capped at the top, meaning that compartments could have been flooded.
Right, it can go over the top. But here's the problem. So do you have what happens when it hits the iceberg with these compartments? Or did you want me to tell that part?
Um, I just got that it hit that part and then the whole thing flooded.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, let me, let me just add a little bit to that. Um, basically what happens is they're 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 at night, they're they're, there's an iceberg that they don't see and um, essentially, you know, there's flame being, you know, cast around as to like why they didn't see it, et cetera. But they they basically run into this iceberg and it collapses the hull on all of these compartments together. So what they had never thought of when they called the Titanic unsinkable, you know, because like if there's ever a hole, it would only fill up one compartment is what if a whole bunch of compartments all fill up? Because what would happen is, what what is going to happen to the ship? The ship is going to do what? If you've ever seen the movie, you know exactly what happens with the ship. The ship does what when the, all of those compartments on one side of the ship all fill up with water. Go ahead, Faith. Go ahead. Faith, I saw your hand go up. Oh, I guess we might have lost.
Yeah, sorry. Um,
Go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say, when it, the water fills up, the weight gets really heavy. And so the part that has all the water in it will sink down further into the water. And then the weight on the top, because the ship was super heavy. It was a big ship. It basically snapped it in half.
It tilt, so it it tilts way up into the air and we'll let kind of Olivia pick up on this. So if like the, there's so much water in the front of the ship because those compartments all fill up with water. And it like if the water had just kind of like filled up the bottom of the boat, it would have sank in a much like kind of slower, you know, rate and they would have had time to like radio for help and, you know, boats could have come and and rescued more people and stuff. But instead, the the front of the ship fills up with water. And so the whole ship just tilts way up into the into the sky and the back end of the ship is like sticking up into the sky and people are like trying to hold on as as like, and so if you've seen the movie, it's very dramatic, you know, and people are like, everything is sliding down and everybody's trying to hold on. And then the weight is just too much. And like Faith said, the ship just literally snaps in half. And once that happens, the entire thing just goes down really fast because like obviously water can get in everywhere now. Um, but uh, Olivia, tell us about like, because it does take some time when uh, the um, the the front of the ship is filling up with water after that big jolt when they hit the iceberg. Um, what, what do they decide to do in terms of like, you know, because they had, like you mentioned, they had not put as many lifeboats in because they were trying to, you know, add extra luxuries. Um, what, what do they decide to do in terms of like who gets lifeboats and who doesn't, et cetera?
Um, I didn't put this down, but what I remembered, was it like uh, more of the famous people that were there got on the lifeboats first?
Um, actually,
Something like that.
Actually, it's the men kind of do their their chivalrous thing. Go ahead. Um, Mackenzie, go ahead.
I was gonna say that it was the women and children so that they could go on one sec.
Yes, very right. You're you're one hundred percent correct. It's women and children who get on the boats. And of course,
I did see that, sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Um, so like, you know, uh, in the movie, they depict that and then the women and the children are getting on the boats. And there, there were poor people who were on it who had bought tickets and they had kind of like, you know, less good, you know, like little, they had tiny little kind of apartments in the lower part of the ship. Um, but yes, higher class families did get their women and children on the boats, but the men were like, I can't just take a spot of a woman or a child on a boat, so I'm just gonna stay here. Yes. So I have a bunch of hands. Um, Kenzie, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, my brother walked in. Um, so I was just gonna say that the women and children had gotten off because, you know, as they could go, they could go on to like reproduce, I guess, like even if the men were gone. And so they'd have a better chance.
Well, yeah. Yeah. And and, you know, I mean, things were incredibly unequal between men and women. But men did have this kind of thing where they were supposed to protect women, you know, like that was part of the ethos of the time, you know, and so now, yeah, i- i- if a woman was in danger, a man was supposed to go and put himself in between her and the danger and 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 protect her. And so that's kind of part of what's going on here. Uh, Faith, what were you gonna say?
I have two things and I really hope that I'm not stepping on Olivia's slide at all.
Oh, it's okay.
No, I don't care. I don't care.
Okay. Um, didn't some men dress up as women to try to get onto ships or boats?
Some desperate men do, yes.
Yeah. And then the other thing was, didn't they not fill up the lifeboats completely? Like the lifeboats were supposed to hold like sixty people, but they only actually there was a boat that only put seventeen people on it for some reason, because like it was the rich people and the rich people didn't want to sit on the lifeboat with the poor people.
Yeah, yes, there was the, so and there were poor families where women and children like basically had to drown because the rich women and their kids got to be on the boats and and other people didn't. So um, yes, you are one hundred percent correct on that. Um, I see more hands here. Uh, Dylan, I think you were next. Go ahead.
Did that Titanic carry any important goods like gold or something?
Uh, they had a lot of cool um, things like porcelain and others. I don't know if there was like a a special jewel necklace like they have in the movie, like the heart of the sea or whatever. I I don't know if that's actually a historical thing or not, you know, obviously that that necklace would be worth quite a bit. But there were um, vault, there were like safes within that rich, because there were like some mega rich people who were on this. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think JP Morgan was going to go on the Titanic, but then decided not to at the last second for some reason. Um, but um, there were some really mega rich people, like we're gonna talk about them in just a second, who were on there. And of course, they had, you know, some of their wealth with them and 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 had it in the safes and their 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 jewelry, et cetera. Uh, Faith, go ahead. Or I don't, I'm sorry, maybe.
I think Nick and Nathan had their hands up before.
Okay, all right, all right, sorry. Uh, Nick, go ahead. You're next.
I was gonna say, it's like, uh, uh, most of the stuff has been covered, but I remember reading somewhere that there was a um, cut in budget towards like the amount of lifeboats they had on the Titanic. Um, what did that money go towards or was that true?
Um, I I actually had a person write a paper on um, this for National History Day and went into great detail. And um, I remember from their paper where basically um, the reason that lifeboats, there were reduced numbers of lifeboats where they were trying to make room for more of the luxury item. So it wasn't necessarily that it was a money issue. It was more of a space issue. Like there just wasn't like, they're like, well, we have to have these X number of lifeboats for, and they're like, well, no, no, we need, we need this cool thing that we want to add in. So just reduce the number of lifeboats because we're not gonna need them anyway, because the thing is unsinkable, you know, and so because they they really believed that it was unsinkable based on those compartments. Um, uh, and then Nathan, you were next. So go ahead.
Maybe completely wrong about this, but I don't know where I heard this, but I read somewhere that one of the reasons like the early lifeboats weren't like filled up was because people didn't take it seriously at first until like they realized, and that was like, when already some lifeboats left.
Right.
And that like, yes, you.
Yeah, they thought that 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 their rescue efforts were gonna come and the, and then that there, they would be rescued and um, so the sense of panic at first wasn't really that pronounced until the ship tilts way up into the air. That's when everybody starts freaking out. Um, but yes, um, so it's it's very kind of orderly, um, you know, the the filling up of the lifeboats. And yes, uh, like someone was saying earlier, there were rich people who basically were like, no, I don't want to sit in the same lifeboat as as these people. And so they kind of commandeered more seats than they should have. Um, and so that, of course, you know, meant that that people died who shouldn't have died. Um, uh, and then Faith, go ahead. I think you're next.
Yeah, um, weren't there people who also said that God himself couldn't sink the ship? Which is completely blasphemous anyway. You shouldn't say stuff like.
Well, you know, maybe God was like, uh, really? Uh, you know, so let me, let me, let me try this. Uh, yeah, so um, a lot of things were said about, like, of course, you know, advertising, you know, they they try to like just, you know, make it sound as as awesome as they can, but a lot of things were said about this ship being completely unsinkable because of this compartment thing. And just because of how huge it was, but no one really put any thought into what happens if a whole bunch of compartments all get collapsed at once. And then they all fill up with water at once. So that's essentially what happened. Um, and then Dylan, go ahead.
Were people stranded for significance amount, for significant amounts of time or was it pretty quick when they got rescued?
No, I mean, the rescue signal went out and um, I recall that there were some ships that got the 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 signal and it took them a little while to get there. But it was that, like, it wasn't that long, but the problem was that anybody who was in the water died not of drowning, but of what? Does anybody know what 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 killed?
Wasn't it how cold the water was?
Yeah. So if you've seen the movie, you know that like the the hero in the movie, Jack, he he dies of hypothermia because the the body heat that you have can be taken out of your body, like if it's like if you're in something really, really cold. And so the the North Atlantic Ocean was just really cold. And so um, it just kind of sucked the body heat out of people who were in the water, like holding on to, you know, pieces of wreckage or whatever. And so that is why most of the people who died, died is just because the rescue efforts, even though they got there relatively quickly. I mean, speaking in terms of, you know, like generally how quick responses are. Um, uh, they, most of them were dead by the time the people got there to rescue them.
I believe it was like an hour or something like that.
So, right. So it was relatively quickly, speaking in terms of like generally how quick responses usually came. But it just didn't help anybody who wasn't in a lifeboat because they were, you know, the body heat was just taken right out of them. Um, so Olivia, let's go back to the story and talk about the famous people who go down because really half the reason why this story is so famous because there are other nautical disasters who are actually worse than the Titanic. Um, the reason this is such a like a famous story is because of how the famous people who die. So so tell us about that. Tell us about like what happens as the men decide to, you know, let the women and the children have the lifeboats, uh, and they go back to their ballroom uh, and listen to the orchestra as it plays as the ship is filling up with water.
Um, the only part that I really got um, from what you just said was the musicians. I didn't get much about the famous people. I mostly like did what happened.
Yeah.
But I did get like the part where the musicians still played as the thing sunk and they would like move around as it went up in the air to like still play. That's what I got.
Okay, all right. So some of the famous names that go down with this ship, which could have included JP Morgan, had he not decided at the last minute not to go, um, included John Jacob Astor the fourth, who was the heir to the uh, great American fur company's fortune, like that was the, remember the mountain men of the West and and the fur trapping they did? Well, that that company that basically um, benefited from their efforts. Um, that they had built a a significant fortune. He was the heir to that. Benjamin Guggenheim, uh, of the Guggenheim family, uh, also went down. Isidore Strauss uh, of the Strauss fortune, uh, went down. And then Maggie Brown was a a woman who had become an entrepreneur and had become uh, very wealthy. But because she was a woman, she ended up on one of the lifeboats. And so she she lived to tell her story and they called her the unsinkable Molly Brown. Um, but uh, you know, uh, it just because these famous people, these rich people just were sitting in the ballroom as the music was playing, as the icy waters kind of rose. Uh, people were just like taken with how how brave they were and how like, you know, selfless they were as they let the women and the children have, you know, spots on the boats and they and they went down with the ship. Um, so um, did you have anything else you wanted to add? I mean, I'm sure we kind of, we jumped in with so many comments on this because it's like such a popular culture thing that we probably like, you know, uh, chopped your story up into little pieces. But um, do you have anything that you wanted to add that wasn't already mentioned? Olivia?
Um, some of the things that I got were that five compartments were ruptured when they hit the iceberg. And the reason why the ship hit the iceberg for like the main point why it hit it is because um, the two lookouts that were out there, I read somewhere that their binoculars that they used were actually missing. So maybe if they had those, they would have saw the iceberg before they hit it. But by the time people saw it, it was too late and they tried to move around it. And yeah, it, you know, it obviously hit it on the side.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah. And and uh, um, you know, there has been enormous debate over that ever since. Uh, but it is still something that captures the popular imagination. And just uh, one last follow up. Um, they did actually find the the wreckage of the Titanic on the floor of the Atlantic Ocean. And trying to find ships on the floor of the Atlantic Ocean, especially when you're really deep down, like not on one of the continental shelves, but way down deep into the 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 very deep ocean floor, very difficult, but they actually found the wreckage and brought up, you know, like porcelain plates and they actually brought up a chunk of the of the ship's hull and and stuff like that. And I remember going to a museum up in Chicago and seeing uh, the the pieces, there was an exhibit of stuff from the Titanic that they had brought up and were putting on display. And some of the things were still pretty perfectly preserved, um, you know, because when the ship went down, it went down really fast and and some stuff survived. So uh, just really interesting uh, kind of um, chapter in history, but we are out of time. We've hit, we've hit the limit. So uh, we're gonna stop here. Uh, thank you, everybody for your attention today. Um, so this does take the place of our normal Saturday Zoom. So um, it's just turn in the homework. Um, when you get to the particular day uh, next week, which I think is Thursday of next week. So if you don't want to look at this for the rest of this week, that's fine. You know, you have until Thursday of next week to to do homework for those of you who are who are watching this online. Uh, and then um, you know, uh, that's just, this will take the place of that Zoom meeting. So um, I think it was better to do it now while everything's frozen and we're we're all kind of trapped in our houses rather than later when it's all melting and we want to get out. So um, thanks again, everyone, and I will see you uh, in class, maybe. And we wanna get out. So um, thanks again, everyone, and I will see you uh, in class, maybe Friday, but probably next week. Uh, have a great rest of your day.